Thank you.
Let's get that.
All right, guys, let's call the meeting to order at six o'clock. Stand up for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with the roll call, starting with Peg, please.
Peg, heard.
I'm sorry.
Mike Blue.
Stephanie Mouse.
Kimberly Ward.
Lisa Gatra.
Humphrey Williams.
Laura Turgeon, we have quorum. Want to thank everybody for coming tonight. We're gonna kind of skip over the approving the minutes until after we have our guests present, but I thought we would start off with Pat Smith, because there's a little less to discuss, so Humphrey's gonna bring everything up.
The only thing on the table was your comment about, was your, the warrant article.
Correct. So, and I've done some research with other towns outside of Milton, and I have looked at things and elected officials come in at a certain wage. Elected officials do not typically put in a raise for themselves in their budget, and I really feel that if the elected officials would like to have a raise, that it should be done via a warrant article to let the town have their say in it. And Pat, really, that's my only concern with your budget at this point.
So, I'll start off by respectfully disagreeing with you. We have spoke with the town attorney, we had spoke with the Board of Selectmen several years ago, which I've been doing elected position for twenty, over 22 years, or about 22 years. When the town realized that the elected officials were in a salary line, it was like one line for all positions, hourly and salary, and they found out that that was wrong, they contacted, obviously, the attorney, and they ended up doing a chart of accounts, which is legal, which the attorney said that what, how we're doing this is legal. There's different ways to do it, obviously, but the way that we were doing it were legal. So, again, I disagree with, you know, the people, I mean, they have the opportunity to discuss the budgets, they have an opportunity to come to your meetings, they have an opportunity to watch it. I can give you an example about different warrant articles. If you remember, at a budget, at a SB two meeting, there was residents that got up and wanted to know why we were putting warrant articles up for road construction and why wasn't it in the budget. So, I think if you start adding all these warrant articles on there, then people are gonna come out and they're gonna ask you these questions. Why is this not in the budget? Why are you bothering us with a thousand dollar raise or a two thousand dollar raise? When they even come out and said, why are you bothering us with a $350,000 road construction article? So, again, I don't see that we're breaking any laws. I disagree with having to focus, put my focus on a warrant article to try to get myself a raise if I want to go out and campaign for a raise. Takes my focus off my job, and it puts my focus on myself, which that's not my job. My job is not to focus on myself. My job is to focus on my men in my department and the people in this town and to keep everything safe and continue to move. So, again, I'd like to respectfully disagree, and I'm assuming that it's gonna go forward the way it has been going forward.
Well, and I appreciate that. And, again, I'm kind of looking at the fact that I was elected to be the steward of our town's money. And in a year where our budgets are overspent and people are trying to figure out whether or not they can pay for groceries or pay for heat and electricity, I just feel like, and I, and I, I'm not nitpicking, I just feel that they should, they don't see every individual line item like we see them. And yes, they can come, and yes, they can look, but they don't, and you know that as well as I do.
And these numbers are produced at your SB two meeting also, in paper form, so they do have the opportunity to look at it. They also have the opportunity to look at the town report. Again, the town has done everything right. We don't give ourselves raises. We, the Board of Selectmen will instruct, this is what you put in, this is what you don't put in, a percentage or not a percentage. It's never been an issue in the past. It's never been anything. We've never done anything. As a matter of fact, we've probably gone more years without any kind of an increase than we have with an increase in my time here, due to default budgets. And this is what the people have, an opportunity. If they don't agree with the budget, they vote a default budget in.
So, where this is a bottom line budget that we vote in, would, because he puts this line item in here, that doesn't automatically give him the raise anyway, does it?
Yes, it would.
Yes.
Okay.
If the budgets approve, whatever's in the final line items are approved. Mike's got it.
Mr., Mike.
Is the, is that warrant article available that could be read here tonight?
Actually, remove the warrant articles. That was, the only thing that was on the, just, and I will state what was on there. The only thing that was on there, the original warrant article, was about a stipend, and that was removed. The only other thing that was in there, and I had put it down just as a preliminary thing, it has not gone anywhere, but it was, do you approve of giving them a raise? And it's, with these numbers. That's, that's all it was. Do you approve?
Is that warrant article, so the people can see, can it be read here?
It, it could be read, but there's nothing out there right now, mic official, that's what I'm getting at. But, but again, what was, what was put in when we talked about this at the last BOS meeting is the original warrant article that was written was scratched, because we hadn't reviewed it, and it wouldn't, and it couldn't go through the way it was written. And so, I put an alternate thing in for the two positions, Chief Marieke's and Pat Smith's, and all it said was, do you approve of a raise? And it was in, you know, from this salary to this salary for a total amount of what the month, you know, what the dollar values were, and it also includes Social Security and Medicare. So, that's all it said in there, and again, we hadn't gone any further than just it was a preliminary thing, so.
So, in short, the new warrant articles read, they're asking, put their raises in a warrant article.
That's, that's what that thing.
That's what I'm proposing.
Laura had brought that up at the meeting, and because, because it was brought up at the meeting, I drafted two things just before the meeting to say, this could possibly be the, what I'm telling you. And again, all it was, was, and I'll, Pat, I'm just using yours as an example. As a matter of fact, let me, I can bring it up, the people in here can see it. Let me, I think I've got it. And that's not what I wanted. That's all looked. Right here. Just to show it's not hiding, we're not hiding anything. So, I'm gonna try to make this wider. One page width, I want to go to one page. All right, let me try to get back to where it was. You can see that we scratched the stipend thing, okay? That was, we already said no before it went any further. These guys had seen it, but this was one of the potential proposals. So, do you support increase in the salary of the fire chief from $40,148 to $41,140? This reflects a 2.47% increase in salary totaling, totaling $992 for the year, an additional $61.50 for Social Security, and $14.39 for Medicare, for a total budget increase of $1,067.89. That's how I drafted it, based on all, that was just based strictly on the numbers for, and then for us to talk about. But, and as you can see, it would have had a tax, it's got a, if that was put on there, it would have a tax impact of .2 cents per thousand, so. And for.
Point less than two cents.
Well, point, point two.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
And the one for Public Works was the same basic, except that it says, you can see, all I was doing was copying. It should have said Public Works, I hadn't even finished doing it, because it was just before the meeting. Do you support increase in the salary, and it should have said Public Works, from $69,878 to $71,825, reflects a 2.79% increase in salary totaling $1,947 for the year, and an additional $120.72 for Social Security, $28.23 for Medicare. Total budget increase of $2,095.95, so that would have a .4 cent increase. And again, nothing's gone any further than it was just brought up as a discussion point, so, based on the comments.
Does anybody else have any?
So, I guess my question is, if it's in budget, a line item in the budget, under the default, it's gonna be $2,095.95 and whatever it was, 1-0, something.
If it's, if it's approved, yep.
And it would be the same amount.
Yep.
As a warrant article.
Yep.
Yep.
So, I guess maybe my question would be, what's the difference in the tax impact?
The difference, there's no difference in the tax impact. If you turn around and have the two out there. The tax impact would be the same if it's, if the budget's approved. The only difference is, is whether or not the public votes separately on it. That's really what it comes down to. Tax impact's the same.
Okay, is the bottom line, overall bottom line budget, under the default?
It is right, yes, it is right now, but we hadn't, we are under the default.
It really has nothing to do with budget default, how much it's costing the taxpayers, and more has to do with the fact that when you run for a position, you run for a position at a salary or at a pay, knowing that for three years, that's what you're going to get paid. If you walk out of that job tomorrow, you still get paid. If you work 50 hours a week or you work eight hours a week, you still collect that same amount of pay. It's not an hourly rate.
No, I understand all of that. I mean, I, I guess, I mean, I look at, I get a stipend, you know, whoop-de-doo, and that has not changed, you know, the entire time I've been on the school board, but I'm not, I'm not running a department.
Right.
If I were running a department, yeah, I would love to be compensated for running that department and running it hopefully efficiently.
Where'd you go?
It hasn't gone anywhere.
Did you hear what I said?
No, I didn't read.
Running your department efficiently. I mean, people get raises for working, for running their departments, for making sure things get done.
Not everybody gets raises. Maybe town employees get raises, but I can promise you, I've worked in corporate America for the better part of 30 years, I don't get a raise every year. I, and I can't vote one in for myself, and I can't throw it in a budget somewhere and, and, and put it there and, and not have to, and not worry about somebody signing it.
I'm sorry for you, I mean, I really am, because that's not fair. However, I'm just, I've worked in the business world also, and yeah, I got raises, and as a manager, I gave out raises depending on people's performance.
So, okay, so, all right, so that you're talking about a, not a COLA raise, but you're talking about a merit raise.
A combination of both.
So, who gives merit raises to department heads?
It was, all right.
Got or elected.
I'm sorry. If you were my employee, I had a pot of money. So, say you and Humphrey were my employees, all of you. Everybody got a COLA, but then I had money left over. So, Humphrey, sorry, honey, you just get the COLA this year.
I'm surprised I got that.
Laura, I'm sorry, I'm taking your COLA away from you. I'm giving you a 2% on top of that. Lisa, 2.5%. To 3%, okay? So, I mean, it was a COLA plus a merit. So, by the looks of these, these are basically not even a COLA, really, when you talk about it.
Actually, let me address that, because these guys, no, I'm gonna, these guys did not make these numbers up. That this is actually from the employee pay plan. What, and, and I want to clarify, there's, because Pat's right. There's never been, there's nothing illegal about putting the line items in here. That wasn't, there was confusion over whether or not it could be in here or not before, and that was cleared up by the attorney. The attorney did talk about warrant articles could be used, or you can use line items. There's, there's various ways of doing it, and that's where this comes from. What they've done is looked at the next step. They can't use it directly. In other words, we can't use the employee pay plan for elected officials. We can't, as a select board, for, for doing that, okay? Because, and we were told that. We could not use that to show a range of pay, because that's for the employees only. It can be used as a guideline, which is for the elected officials, okay? But, and I want to step back to where we first came up with this. This is, I don't want to get off on a tangent, but where this first came to light was we thought, when we developed this employee pay plan, that it would be for everyone in town that worked here in town, whether elected or not, right?
Yep.
That was the discussion.
And that was my thought, too.
And when, when we brought the new town clerk in, thinking that we were gonna use the range of pay, we found out, no, you cannot do that, because that was not approved as a pay plan for elected officials.
Was that line in, I'm just gonna back up.
We had to use the line, the line value that was in there and voted on in March. And that was, see, and that, and what it comes down to, and I'm gonna use this, that if this is voted on, and Pat, if Pat stepped aside and another person came in or another person's elected, if that's the budget that's in there, the proposed, if that's what gets approved, the next person gets that pay. They don't get anything less, they don't, you know, or anything, or anything more. It's what's in that line item. And that's where we started talking about what was gonna be done as we booked on.
Even if you do a warrant article and that gets approved, that number still goes to that number, and it's still gonna be the number in your default budget. But to go back to the meeting.
No, hold on a minute. If, if it went to a warrant article and the salary increase was approved, that would be the new default.
That's right, that's what you said.
The new, the new salary would be, it wouldn't be using the old default.
So, to go back to the attorney, so, the attorney said that the practice that the town is using has been a good practice, because when you have positions like mine, which is a full-time position plus, I mean, I don't just work 40 hours, I could work 100 hours, I could work whatever, to go back to an old Board of Selectmen, two hours or 200 hours, whatever it takes to do the, to do the job. If you don't treat your elected official that works those type of hours like an employee, which that's what they've done for me over the years, you don't, you're not gonna get them and you're not gonna keep them, and you're gonna end up at some point doing something different that's probably gonna cost you more money down the road.
Do you happen to have the copy of the employee retention?
The whole plan?
Yeah.
I've, I've gotten copies of different parts of it, but why would.
I just am curious, because for some reason, I certainly remember seeing all the different plans.
We have a pay, we do have a, we do have a plan in place, and the plan has their positions on it, but the attorney told us, we cannot use that plan to set a pay, set a pay scale.
For elected officials.
For the elected officials, right.
Because they're, yeah.
And Humphrey alluded to it, but just to be clear, we can use it as a guideline to keep us in line with the other employees that are recognized in the plan, which will keep us in line, give us something to go by. But if the budget fails, it does not go into default. That's really the only difference. Whereas if the budget fails, the numbers for the remainder of the employees are part of the default.
Right, right, because they're employees.
Yep.
Because they're recognized by that plan, which was voted on, therefore, that's, it's their contract.
Because they're employees.
Yep.
Right. They're not elected officials.
Correct.
Do we want to vote?
That's, that's up.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I do not like that kind of a plan. I'd rather see them become employees. If they go, let's say if they leave. Okay, now they're on the ballot, well, the ballot's open for it, there's an open position. I know, Chris alluded to it, and I think about it. You may be a person who's not qualified to be in there.
Yep, and I'm gonna start, I'm gonna run for Department of Public Works. I'm gonna run for Pat's position, and I'm gonna make $72,000 next year, or whenever he decides, because, hey, why not? I don't need to have any experience.
But that's what I'm kind of worried about, and he may couldn't.
And that's what I'm worried about.
Because what are you gonna do? You can't take them out. You know, they put their name in it, well, honestly, they don't get voted in, but.
Until you stop electing them, there is no control. They're always elected. They, they, so unless you want to stop electing them, they're never gonna be employees.
And didn't we do that with the police chief?
The police chief is a permanent.
They used to be elected, and they had to go to the ballot to get the, to get that off of there.
Yep.
Yeah, and.
But I, I guess also, I mean, we do the same thing with the school district. A teacher leaves, steps 14, makes a lot, well, not a lot of money, but makes money. That person retires, we replace that person at step five.
Right.
Because that's the experience level.
Right.
I would assume that if Pat left with the experience and we hired somebody new, why not? I mean, that's ridiculous.
Because by the, hold on, hold on. By the law, the old, here's the thing. By law, the approved salary for that position is what gets approved in the budget.
We have said one, step two, step three.
There is no, we can't use the steps. The lawyer told us those steps. We, trust me, Peg, that's what we tried to do this year. They, these guys know that. That's what we attempted to do when we brought in the new town clerk, and we thought we could use the pay scale based on that. But per the law, you cannot do that. So, if they're elected, it goes according to what was approved in the budget. If they're hired, if that, if the position, because I know, next position at one point, a couple of years ago, I mean, it's been on the ballot a number of times, and it has not gone through as an appointed position.
It's been on three times.
Yeah, and they have not gone through. The, the public has voted it down. So, as long as they're elected positions, it's what's, it's either in the line item like it's been done, and what's in that line item is what the new person gets paid. There's not much we can do about that, that, to you.
Yep.
So, I mean, I guess I can see the correlation, because an elected official is really accountable to the voters, and that their salary should be accountable to the voters as well.
And that's really all I'm getting at.
I can, I can see the correlation there, that it's, that pay, that pay plan is about people who are employed by the town, and by the, that the selectmen, that the selectmen manage, and you don't really manage the elected officials.
Do not manage elected officials.
That's not their boss, their boss is not the selectman.
There's, there is a difference, and, and she's talking about the positions and who. Chief Marieke is responsible for Chief Marieke and his department. Pat actually, his position as an elected position, actually reports to the town administrator and the board, because that's how that's draft, that's how that's put in the RSA.
But their salary is not.
No, their salary is not. No, their salary is based on where is the, where's the, where's the, what, what was voted on by this, by the approved budget.
And so, if we didn't have the employee retention plan, any employees that were, that, the selectmen could choose to give people raises or anything.
That's what happened.
Right, but that can't happen with the elected officials.
Correct.
They have received, the Board of Selectmen have received, or have given raises to elected employees before, because I know when the town has been under default budget.
It's happened. Yep.
Person A, the default budget, say the salary is $40,000, the Board of Selectmen have given them a 2% increase. So, by the time we actually go to do the budget, oh my, the salary is whatever, 2, 4, 6, 8, like 8%, $8,000 more.
But was that legal, according to what you said earlier?
It's legal. It is legal, it's just that when you're doing it outside of this, it becomes a whole different way of, you know, trying to track. When you, when you, the reason we went to the employee pay plan and separate that from the elected officials, we did that thinking it was gonna be for everyone, but we knew the employees would then, if it got approved, it would always go into the default budget, and we, we based it similar to the contracts they work with, with the teachers. Once you get that contract, you've got a range of pay that you can give to people as employees. The problem, and we thought, again, back to this, we thought the same thing could be done for the select, I mean, for the elected officials, that we could use that range of pay based on experience. And we were told flat out, no. And if you read the RSAs, it, it does not allow for that.
It was just earlier, you said, you know, that that's the line item, and you can't give them nothing more, nothing less. So, that's what made me think that you weren't able to give them raises.
They were, they did give elected officials raises.
Earlier, you said, that you were talking about with the town clerk, you said, you know, so that's that number.
No, I said, we could not give, we could not give, that's right. The salary when we, the salary that was approved for 2022, okay? And I'm.
And that's why I said, it's so.
Had to be the salary, okay? With, let's step back. When that was put in, that was proposed last year for 2022, and it was proposed by the incumbent.
Right.
Town clerk at the time for that increase. So, and I, as a budget committee chair, I asked the question, what are they gonna do if she doesn't run? Okay? And the selectmen, well, gonna use the plan. That's what everybody thought was gonna be done. And it was like, couldn't find, I couldn't find it anywhere saying the plan was, could be used for elected officials type of thing, unless it's directly approved as a specific plan to that position. And that's not something I found anywhere. But, so when we had the new clerk come in, the select board sat down, we had the meeting, we thought we could make, you know, we thought we could pay him based on the, on that range, and the chair was told by our lawyer, no. What was the salary that was approved in the, in the, in the vote? That's the salary. So, in all honesty, the new town clerk got paid more than the previous town clerk with experience.
But you can't give him more, so using the town clerk as an example, because, because that, can you give him more than what is in the line item, or no?
At the time, no.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying that we should, I'm just saying, is that, so, okay.
No, that line item is the line item that's.
So, that's what I was saying.
The line item that's here, and let's, so that that's clear.
Right, when it's, as long as it's voted in by the, so either way, it's voted in by the public.
What in the hell's going on with my computer?
I'm just trying to make sure I understand it correctly.
Right here, this 69, and I, because I got, I got Pat's budget up here, the 69, 878.
Nothing's up there.
Okay? Yeah, it's up there now, it just takes a second. The 69, 878 was the approved budget for 2022. That is the default for 2023.
But, so, you could, you guys couldn't decide, they say, hey, we're gonna give you a thousand dollar raise right now. You guys couldn't decide that.
Why can't they? I don't know why they can't.
No, no, you can't, hold on, hold on.
That's the difference between employee and elected.
Is it legal for the, the selectmen to change that rate? It is not intended to be that, and that's happened in the past, okay? And now, can they do that with employees? You can, but it becomes a real, as Peg talked about, we've been through this. It becomes a real headache, not only for the budget committee, but at nowhere can you track in there what it is. So, when we were paying the elected official, it's what's in the line item, that's it, until another budget gets approved, or enough, that line item, if it was either a separate line item like this that gets approved in the budget this next go-around, or if it wasn't a warrant article, however we ended up putting it in, it stays that way until such time as something else passes to, to change that value.
And if it's a warrant article, then, and then it gets approved, and then all, now it's the default again.
So, what, what I was saying was in response to when she said, well, I know we've done it with elected officials, and it became a mess in the default, and that's why they wanted to use retention.
And here's the thing.
But it shouldn't have been done.
Elected officials were treated the same as employees here in the town, and that's not how, that's not how the RSAs are written, in that regard.
Except that their, technically, their boss is the people, and that's what.
Correct.
And, and so, the people either vote their raise in, in the budget, or on a warrant article, and what you guys are saying is a warrant article. And I can see the beauty in that, because the, they're not gonna look at the line items. And it makes it more, as much as you can give them all the things, but there's so many lines that they look at that piece of paper and they say, oh my goodness, this is, this is too much to even line by line.
Right.
It's even hard for us to, I mean, how much time do you spend? And you spend looking at every single line. So, I can see the beauty of that. I, I, that it makes sense that it correlates to do it as a warrant article. I can, I can see that. I, I, that it makes sense that it correlates to do it as a warrant article, I can, I can see that.
In an ideal world, it just wouldn't be elected positions and then it would.
Agreed, agreed, and, and unfortunately, fortunately, for both of our elected officials, nothing can change again until their cycle is up. So, you know, they, we can't put it on the ballot for them to become, you know, town employees, non-elected officials, until their service time is, is up.
No, it could be on the ballot and it means it's on.
It could, it could go on.
It wouldn't take effect until.
But it wouldn't take effect until.
Right. But I mean, I don't think that was the point of the discussion.
It's the following year if it passed, if that was put, if there was a warrant article on there this year for their positions to be appointed and they passed in March, the following January, the following year would be when that would go, the earliest it could go into effect.
Because you'd have to have.
You have to get through that particular year until that goes changes.
And I don't even have a problem with warrant articles going back up again to, you know, to put them as appointed. I mean, if, if, I, I get the fact that you guys wanna be treated as town employees, I.
I don't wanna be treated as a town employee, I wanna be treated fairly as the law allows, and to put the money in the line item like we've been doing since two thousand thirteen, fourteen for me and who knows how long for Pat, just like every other town employee, I understand by law it's different, we're elected, they're employees, but the law allows for us to be treated the same when it comes to the money going in the line for that position, just like there's a salary for the police chief. You could probably pull that out and make, and put the police chief on there if you want, true accountability per position, but I feel like you're secluding us because the law allows you to have a warrant article.
I don't think.
Feel as if you have the opportunity to be fair and equal, and I understand we're elected, we're not employees, but I still would like to be treated fair and equal to the other people that are employees, we do the same job, just the way we got here is a little bit different, we're in charge of our department, Chief Pross is in charge of our department, the rect director is in charge of our department, they have line items in their budgets for their salaries, we have line items in our budgets for our salaries, but there's an alternative to put a warrant article up, and that's just treating us differently, when there's not a need to treat us differently. And I understand, I understand the whole, um, concept of we're accountable to the people, but Chief Pross is accountable to the people through the Board of Selectmen, through the laws that he has to uphold. We're all accountable for the people we work for, it's just a different way.
Okay, now, let me address, don't, don't walk away, you, you looked at the chief and says that his could go into a warrant article too, the answer is no, he can't, that he's an employee, his, he goes per the employee pay plan, that's the reason it's there. Yeah, but, no, no, let me finish Nick, and then I'm gonna let you talk again, but it's not a personal thing here in this discussion, number one, and it's never been a personal thing for me either. It's looking at when we're trying to determine the salary aspect of things, and to me, all elected, I, and I'm gonna go back to last year. I was the chair on the budget committee last year when a, one of the selectmen suggested all elected, all elected positions get a two percent increase, and I went, no, because by doing that, nobody, you know, I was absolutely right, nobody in this town, with the exception of maybe one or two people that would really dig into everything, are gonna go through every one of those line items, they look at what's the bottom line of, the bottom line budget. Everybody's got the ability to go and look at every one of these line items, so, and it was shot down because this is like, to, to put pay raises in to me is the same as Congress giving themselves a pay raise, I don't agree with that principle, that practice. So, when it comes to a business decision of we went to the employee pay plan, so the default and the budget itself matched up, that isn't the case with elected officials, so the difference is, you are different, I agree you both, you, you both run departments, how yours is run per the RSA is is different than his, and it's different than John's. So, they're not all the same as employees.
I understand.
How the employees work is the same across the board, because the town clerk can be paid by salary or can be based on revenue coming in, okay? You answer to the people, you don't answer to the board. John answers to the people, and I, I mean, the town clerk, we'll put it that way, answers to the people. His position, Pat's is the only one that's different in that regard, and his is treated sm, more, more like an employee, but it's still an elected position in the fact that he has to report to the town administrator. So, that was the how, I know Laura brought that up, and that's how it came up with other people too, saying the answer to the people, so.
And, and really what brought this up was we got caught with our pants down when the previous tax collector left the town.
I understand.
And our people, our, us, all of us, had an increase in our tax rate of a dollar sixty-four per thousand because of overspent budgets, because we ended up having to, not just because we ended up having to pay the full salary for two tax collectors when only one was working.
Hmm, that's not, I don't believe.
We had to pay extra, we had to pay extra for the outgoing person.
Alright, so, you, you mentioned something earlier that whether, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that the person can, can come in, a newly elected position can come in and request their salary for the year and leave, that's not true, you have to, how's it go, services rendered?
Have to do.
You have to.
Actually, no, they can walk out, but it's up to the people to turn around and then try to go after them to have them removed. It is true, because they don't, if you walked out and you continue to be paid unless, unless you're taken to court, and they try to have you removed from the position, or if you're voted out, an elected official, I, we don't control the hours. So, the hours are controlled by the elected person.
Right, but I only get paid once a week.
That's a choice.
If I leave tomorrow.
But that's a choice.
That's the way.
I know, no, 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 Nick, I'm saying that is a choice, because the town administrator will tell you the same thing, that's how we've been doing it, and I know the famous expression, that's how we've, we've always done that type of thing, but the truth is, as an elected official, just like with the town clerk, how you're paid, the, the timeframe you're paid and all that is something that can be changed, it can go to monthly, it could go to.
Come to an agreement with the elected official.
I know that.
And what I read was that a, when an elected official comes in, they, they can be paid weekly, they can be paid bi-weekly, quarterly, uh, by annual or annually.
Exactly.
But, that person ha, can't get paid the first six months in January, they have to go till June, then they get the six month pay, then they gotta go to the end of the year, so they have to render the services before they can get the paycheck.
But they also only have to come in.
Between the elected official and the Board of Selectmen, or the town, or the city, or wherever you work.
How often you pay.
That's how you're gonna make that pay, there's an agreement before you do it.
But you als, they also regulate their own hours, so they could come in four hours a week and still collect the same amount of pay.
Absolutely true, but I don't know if you can find one in this town that's done that.
She just, that's just a statement.
But it's just a statement.
How many other elected officials do we have in town? We, I've talked about the town administrator, Pat.
Hold on a minute.
Treat me like Pat Smith, treat him like Nick, and that's all we're asking, we're not asking you to look at what somebody in some other town did. If I'm doing something wrong, I expect Board of Selectmen to bring me in a meeting and say, listen, you're doing something wrong, so let's get this corrected, so this isn't wrong anymore.
I don't, wait, hang on. Nobody's saying, and I'll tell you right, I'm representing the board, I'm not saying you guys are doing anything wrong in this, that is not, this was a general, this was a discussion about pay raises.
You sit in and you say this is not personal, but it feels personal.
I know it feels personal, Pat, because it's hitting you, but, hang on a minute, but my point is, is Nick, you can, but I'm gonna answer the questions, we got multiple things going on, so please.
At the microphone, I had several things I was trying to say and I've been cut off a little.
Go ahead.
So, I understand your point about the concern that an incumbent can leave his position and a new person can come in and get paid the same. Unfortunately, that's the way the state law works, this isn't a Milton specific problem.
Agreed.
But, putting a warrant article to determine if Pat or Nick gets a two percent raise is not gonna fix that problem. What's gonna fix that problem is collaboration between Pat and Nick and the Board of Selectmen to realize that it is a problem, and we, there are solutions, but if you put a warrant article on saying, we're gonna make these positions appointed, it will fail. Because it's failed every year miserably, and the people of the town of Milton, which were also, you also elected, or were, you're in this position because they elected you also, elected us, cause they trust us to do the job. They do not wanna give up that right to elect us for these positions, it's, it's have, how many years, fifteen years? I know it's been twice since I've been chief in thirteen years, and it isn't even close.
But Nick, isn't the, just the point of order, isn't the discussion on the floor whether to form a warrant article to have the raise in, not.
Correct, but my point being, you are correct, but my point being, you're tying, you're tying the, um, the possibility of a new person making the same, I've heard her say it several times. The new person making the same as to this warrant article, whether the two people that are gonna be here for at least two more years when our terms run out, whether we get a raise during this period, so, I understand your problem, trust me, I, I get it, and I, and I, I think it should probably eventually be appointed, but it's how we get there, we need to work together to come up with that solution.
Again, the only reason I brought this up, Nick, is because I feel the people have a right to understand if they want to give you and Pat pay increases, and John, or whoever else is an elected official that wants a pay increase. Only reason I brought it up is I feel that elected officials should have, be, because the people hired you, the people should have a right to understand whether or not they give you a pay increase, has nothing to do with staying, going, coming, leaving, working ninety hours, working three hours, has nothing to do with that other than the fact that every person I know in this town is never gonna look at this. They're never gonna look at the fancy book that they get, it's gonna become a piece of their fire, and they're not going to see that they're giving their pay increases.
No, but they elected each of you to watch over that for them, and when you put.
Hence why I'm here.
And when the last, the last several years, when this is, goes forward the way that it has, this has never been an issue until this year. And, I, I don't know, I just, like Pat said, I respectfully disagree, and I think that it should be left the way that it's been for a long time, because we sat in a room with the attorney, we all had questions, and the way we're doing it is perfectly legal, there's nothing wrong with it.
Are there any, how many other elected officials? We have.
There's three department heads and then there's, there's a lot of elected officials, all the elected positions are elected officials.
I'm not talking about the budget committee and those, I'm talking about department heads.
Three.
Three.
So, we do not elect Karen Brown as an employee?
No.
No.
She's elected.
They're the only department head, it's the three positions.
She's not elected.
She is a town employee.
She's elected, she's elected as a, no, she's elected as a supervisor of the checklist, she is not elected as a rec department director, no.
And the library, she is an employee?
Yep, not, not a town employee, the employee, the library trustee, trustee, the library trustee.
So, did John, I mean, you did.
He's not asking for a pay raise.
He's not asking for, okay, because he came in at.
Yep.
I think, like, what's going through my mind is, this is a tough year for everybody, not just the town, me personally, all, everybody in this room. There's many people who are not getting raises from their employers because of COVID inflation, companies are struggling. And I think that kinda relates to what Laura's saying, like, yeah, we all want more money, and I'm not saying you don't deserve it. But, just like my boss says, yes, Stephanie, you can have a raise, I, I agree with Laura saying that the town should be the ones to say, yeah, Nick, or yeah, Pat, you guys deserve a two point, whatever percent raise.
I realize it's not a ton of money.
At the deliberative session too.
Yep.
I, I think, you know what, thank you, Mike, I would almost rather have two options at the deliberative session.
You can't.
Why can't you?
You can't have two options at the deliberative session, you either present a budget or you present a warrant art, I mean, you present the budget, you can present a, you can present the warrant article, yes you can, but that would not show an increase here plus show it on the warrant article, you can't do that.
Thinking is, I know that the town can, or the taxpayers can make changes to the budget, I would almost rather see it in the budget and brought up, and that way the townspeople would vote yes, give them a raise rather than having a separate warrant article. I mean, you do it as a warrant article, you, you just showed what the difference is, and it's point oh, 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 two percent, or point oh, 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 that four percent.
Before, before we go, by the way, I do.
Moderator?
Yes, go ahead.
What?
Assistant moderator, sorry. That's been tried before, especially on the school budget.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Like, take five thousand out for books, and, um, and, uh, it's gone to the court, because Larry Brown took it to the court. The number that gets approved at the bottom is the number, period.
Right.
All the law, now the selectmen can then, let's say fifty thousand got drawn out of the budget, the selectmen can then go and adjust the budget lines, if you will, to meet the, the tax, the cut ordered by the taxpayers or the cut that was put forth at the deliberative session and then voted on in March, that is a possibility, but every time, for the last, let's see, fourteen, fifteen years I was moderator, every time there was a someone tried to do a line item budget cut or adjustment, it's the total, they still approved, the warrant article still gets written, article, let's say three, to raise and appropriate four million, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents.
Right.
Period, that's it, so it doesn't really affect any other line particularly.
It may not, I mean, I, I totally agree, it's the bottom line only, because we actually had money added into the school budget one year, and it was bottom line, and we could do whatever we wanted with it, not whatever, but however, if they want to reduce the bottom line by three thousand dollars, because those elected officials are getting a raise, I would say that's up to the townspeople and they're the ones voting on it that day.
No, because as the lawyer agreed with them, it's the number still written in the budget that you approved. Find the three thousand dollars somewhere else, but the town clerk is still getting the number that's in the budget. And these guys are contending, and I would agree, that if it's in the budget line, that's the number they're getting, period.
Hey, Chris, can you stay there a minute, cause I want you, your moderator hat too, I have a suggestion to try to get past this, so, and just hear me out. I need you to, yeah, I need your moderator thing, we can draft a warrant article, a general warrant article for the public that says, do you want to change future pay raises for elected officials to a separate warrant article? In which case it doesn't change what's going on here, but give the people the right this year at this election to make the determination that for future elections, I mean, for future pay raises for elected officials will go to warrant article.
You could.
In which case I think it eliminates this.
To force future boards of selectmen or budget committees to do that, it would have to be
Any pay raises.
Well crafted or written.
Yeah, but I'm saying, we could, we could put it out there, instead of saying, let's pick these two right now and do it, find out if the public's even behind looking at it at that level. Similar to what we've done, similar to what we've done with the park, and how do you wanna treat the park? How do you wanna treat future pay raises for elected officials, do you want that to be on a warrant article or continue in the line item?
That is possible.
And leave it as the ti, as a line item?
Leave the line item for now, well, again, with the line item, I think, you, you find out where the, then it's not a personal thing, I don't want anybody to feel, cause it's not a personal thing, I don't want it to be that way, but you would give the public a chance, and again, this would be, the, both of these guys get two more years on their position, this would give you the chance to turn around and see where the public stands on that type of thing, does that sound more equitable to you guys and more fairly treated?
I think that, if you would like to make some changes to these two positions, I would respectfully request that. The board of selectmen and the town administrator, or a selectman and a town administrator, would call us in, and we'd start discussing how we can change this. When we decide to walk from these positions, or it's, no, we're not gonna be elected, it looks like we'll be not be elected. And I think we can come to some common ground. I think the problem is that when things just get done, and and you're not brought in on it, and it just pops up in a budget meeting, or it pops up in the selectmen's meeting, we're sitting there like. What the heck is going on, nobody said anything to us.
Yeah, well, again, and I'm not trying, this is not, this is just to try to make sure that we can move forward with this, that it's. I, because I understand where both you guys are coming from, and I don't want anybody to feel that this is a personal thing, because it's not a personal thing. This is just business type of thing, and where do we go? But again, in that regard, it doesn't impact what you guys are getting right now, it doesn't change the line item aspect of it. This is just to see where the public's, you know, how does the public feel?
So, I'd like you keep this, like, you keep this in the back of your mind, when you're voting on this, okay? What's the reason why we had the employee retention plan to begin with? Losing offices, number one. Pat almost had his whole crew leave one day, what, three, three guys in one day, or one week? Okay, you know why, do you know why? Because Milton doesn't pay anything. Okay, now, I know we're talk, I'm talking about employees, okay, but it's the same for the officials, too. So keep this in the back of your mind when you vote tonight. We, you know, some of us don't get raises, some of us do, okay? I know I don't work for free. They don't work for free. Works a lot of houses, but I guess some is free.
Close to free.
Okay? He doesn't work for free, these guys don't work for free. These are the hot soul of our town, these employees right here.
Okay, so the latest, I just want to make sure I understand, the latest would be, keep those line items with.
Need to vote on it.
Yeah, there's, there's no motion on the, on the floor.
I wanna just understand what Humphrey just said.
This is a suggestion.
Yeah.
Keep the line items.
Say the number, so I know.
Okay, so, for.
In other words, go forward with what's in here, based on the employee pay plan as a guide for this year.
Right.
Uh, because it keeps in line with what the other, with what the employees are also doing this year.
Right, and then put together a warrant article asking.
And then, put together, we can put together a warrant article, asking the public, do you want to change how the future pay raises are put forth? Something to that effect, now, I don't know the exact words, because they're right, you need to, we need to get the the right words legally, if you're gonna do that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I.
So, I would make a motion that that's how we move forward with this.
Has anybody done a comparison? You're talking about the pay raises, obviously, it's an amount, too. Has anybody done comparisons of other towns with what they're paying their officials?
It's very difficult to find out how that's done, but there, there's different, there's all different aspects, Mike, so yes, there's been some of that that's been looked at.
And I have too, yeah.
Okay, can you just repeat the whole?
Well, I don't know if we're past this yet, Laura's got control, so you're looking at me, I'm not the chair.
I know, but you just made a motion.
I made a, well, I.
No, he didn't.
I didn't, I was going to make a motion, and I says that I can make a motion to move forward that way, but we hadn't gotten that way, so I want that back in Laura's lap, it's her control.
Yes, Nick.
Just a couple things. I want everybody to understand that this has nothing to do with the raise for me. This is principle and and the request to be treated equally and fairly. And nine hundred dollars is not gonna make me a break. That, that two point seven four percent. Is only putting me on step one of the guided employee retention plan. So, I'm not even on there yet. So if a new employee. New fire chief were to come in, and you wanted to start him on step one, I understand, has to be the salary. But you're not, you're not paying that new person step ten, even though I've been here for thirteen and a half years. You're not even on the scale that the people of this town said, that's what the fire chief should be paid. Whether it was legal or not, they they saw that number, and they voted, they were okay with that number for the fire chief. And I'm, if I get this two point seven four percent, it puts me at step one. So.
And I'm, I'm in a cycle, I'm, it's at the beginning of the.
And I understand your point, Laura, that somebody can come in with no experience. But they have the same responsibilities. They have the same commitment. And the people of this town voted for them and trusted that they could do the job. Just like elected officials in, just like the governor. Whether he has experience or not, he's getting the same amount of money as the previous governor that had been there for eight years. President, senator, board of selectmen. Twelve hundred bucks.
School board.
Twelve hundred dollars for this selectman, this selectman, and that selectman?
To his point. Since the, the employee retention plan was voted on, if it did include the elected.
It did have their salaries in it.
It, it, it does, it, it didn't matter, though, Kim, the lawyer stated, and and by the way, to come back to it.
The public didn't review all the line items. The, the public voted on an employee pay plan. Okay, I I guarantee you, you didn't have everybody reading what everybody's pay was, but. The lawyer was very clear, it does not matter what's in that plan, because they didn't vote on it for an elected official.
I understand, I'm just saying, so, but the, so that detail, so the, when the town voted on it, the voters did not see that it included.
They had a right to see it, but people don't, people weren't getting the whole thing.
Well, I understand.
It was available to them.
Yeah.
And the police chief did a presentation on it, and all the numbers were put on the board of PowerPoint at SB two meeting.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah, that's how it was presented.
How many people attended that SB two meeting?
Last year, probably about fifty, forty something, maybe.
How many, how many people do we have in this town? Four thousand?
Just a few more than that, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, let's talk about, let's talk about the, the, uh, not the amount of people in this town, but how many people show up at the elections?
Yeah, right.
We're talking eight hundred.
Yep, yep.
So.
But let me, let me help with this, and like I said, I'll ma, I'll turn my thing into a motion.
Okay.
I will make a motion that we move forward with the two elected pay raises as written, and draft. Future, a wa, future warrant article for determining if the town wants to change how pay raises are done in the future.
I would second that for discussion, does any more discussion?
It's up.
Alright, I'll make a motion to go forth with the pay raises. As are written right now, and writing a warrant article for the town to decide how they would like to. Do pay raises for elected officials going forward.
Did I already second that?
No, she's, she's repeating what I had.
Okay, so, so, I guess I'll second it again.
You called for discussion, so I, we need to know if somebody's gonna second that, or.
Oh, okay. Okay, nice, we'll second that then, too.
All in favor?
Okay, so, so the motion is what you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
But both of them said.
All in favor?
I.
I.
That was a no, we, I'm sorry, you looked up.
No. One area, no.
I.
I.
So, now it's, now we have a tie.
Yeah, and she's, she's gotta decide.
And I just said no.
And if it's four to four, that means it doesn't pass.
Wasn't, wasn't a tie.
One, two, three, four? Oh, no, that's right, yeah, one, two, three, where's your vote?
I.
I, I.
So it's three.
One, two, three.
And she made, it is a tie, but, which means it does not pass.
It is a tie.
I, I didn't hear you say no, Mike.
Because it didn't get a.
No, make it clear, it's no.
Okay, so it's four, four.
Which means it does not pass, because it didn't.
Nope. So we don't know where you go from here with this one.
I propose that we do a warrant article, like Laura said in the beginning. Should Pat or Nick get this too?
We, I don't think we can make the order.
Okay.
Well, no, I'm just proposing we keep it.
Here, here's, just, just to clarify, the only thing the budget committee can do on this particular point is make the determination on that, on that salary. It's, the B O S identifies the warrant articles and that, or you, or public could draft the warrant article separately, but on that particular case, we can, as a budget committee. Draft the warrant article, but, just the suggestion.
Alright, but the board of selectmen. Did they approve it?
Approve what? We, the, the only numbers that were in here were the numbers that we put forward is of suggestion. Nothing was done on this, as far as the board went here.
So I didn't want to see that, that.
Well, I'd like the, the board of selectmen, B O S.
That, we put, I know, I put that in there because we were putting a new column in, that was actually my suggestion going forward, but. They met with us at the last meeting, and we tabled this, so it didn't go anywhere.
Well, I know the budget committee tabled, but I didn't know.
It was tabled amongst the whole, the whole committee.
So, those who said no, I'd like to know what it is about the motion that you didn't like, is it that you didn't want? The seventy-one, eight-two-five to stay there, and you want it to become the six, the sixty-nine, eight-seventy-eight, is that?
Yes.
Yes? Yeah? You want it to stay the sixty-nine?
No, I don't like, I don't like the idea, I, I told you, unless they're officials, when they think, oh. You could get somebody who signs up and had no clue what they're doing.
Okay, so you want it to stay, you want.
But the voters, that there, I leave it there.
Do you want, you want it to stay the sixty-nine, or do you want to stay the seventy-one?
I think the seventy-one.
Okay.
I know that's why I reversed, but.
But you, so what didn't you like about the motion, it was gonna stay at seventy-one, and then?
Because you're gonna put a warrant article.
You didn't like the warrant article?
Hold on, hold on, Bob, my cl, I want to clarify my motion, so that you understood. I made the motion, we go forward with the seventy-one thousand.
Right.
Okay, I made the motion to go forward with the seventy-one thousand, my comment about a warrant article was, we draft a warrant article for the future. To see if the public wants to change how we do it later on to a warrant art, you know, to a warrant article.
And really, could that, can't we only do a suggestion at that point?
Well, my, I made a motion for the, I made the motion for the budget committee that we go forward with the two pay raises.
Yeah, exactly.
That was my comment, the two pay, in other words, the seventy-one thousand, eight-twenty-five. And I'll make the, make it clear with the elected affa, with the forty-one thousand, one forty, in other words, as presented, we go forward with that this year. My comment was that we would all, that we would draft the warrant article for the public to determine if we want to do future pay raises. As a warrant article, or continue doing it this way.
And I was gonna say, technically, we can't draft the order. We can propose.
I know, that's why, that's why I wanted to make sure, because you just made it sound like you voted.
I think you.
If you had a question that, okay, if you were just saying seventy-one, and that's it, nothing more, but it sounded like, okay, we're gonna, now we're gonna probably put, later on, we may draft one.
But not, not, not to cha, not to change this year's budget, no, that was for.
So you, you want to put a warrant article to change your warrant article?
I want to put, my comment was that, we move forward with the pay raises as identified. And we can, in matter of fact, I think the best thing to do is the, and the reason I did that was to clarify that we could draft a warrant article. I propose that we draft the warrant article, asking the public if all future raises should be done via warrant articles.
Or by the budget, and you know what?
And you have to put another warrant article.
But we have to approve the warrants article, folks.
So, there was only one no left, that, what was it that made you know? Was it the, was it the ra, you put in the raise to seventy-one, or was it the warrant article part?
I think, for me, it's the warrant article part at this point, and and the main reason being is I don't think that the warrant article solves the issue at hand.
So, I'd like to make a motion to, and only the first part of Humphrey's motion, to accept the pay raises to the seventy-one and the forty-one, whichever they were. And, and leave it at that, for that part of it, because I think the warrant article was the, was the catch, with, for most.
And that's, that's your motion?
That is my motion.
And leave out the warrant article?
Leave out the warrant, just the first half of it, to keep the raises, to go with the, the two raises, the way they are in the budget right here, the seventy-one, eight-twenty-five, and the forty-one, and some change.
I'll second that.
I.
I. No.
I.
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 I will for now.
So it passed, so we can move past the elected official piece.
Yes.
And now, can I make the second motion to propose to the budget, to the board of selectmen, that they, that they draft a warrant article, because I think that was the.
I, I think that the draft of a warrant article needs to be better than just, um, how they get their pay raises. I think it needs to be. They either get paid as employees, or they get paid.
I'm fine if nobody wants a second, I was just trying to separate the two, because I think it was too much.
Here's the point, in all honesty, this, at this point in time, trying to put together another warrant article in the next few days, isn't going to happen, for now.
Right, I know. Yeah.
We're gonna end up talking with a lawyer to figure out how this is done, and we'd work that out with.
I was just trying to separate the two issues, because that was the other confusion it was with everybody.
But, but Lisa, I think, what I heard, and I think this is you, Nick, that what your salary is currently. You're, like, step one of the employee retention plan. So I'm, I'm thinking, whatever the wording would be, would be, can the selectmen? Give them increases?
It could go either way, but we can't, we, we, I mean, as, as public citizens, we could go and get a petition going, or, but, we can't really do anything.
No, we can't do anything, but.
I, I was just trying.
But I, I don't think it should be tied to the employee, unless Pat.
And really, it doesn't, yeah.
That would like his.
It's really not a budget committee thing, no.
The employee retention plan, Nick, and?
One, Nick, because we gotta, we gotta get moving on this, go ahead.
I was just gonna say that I think that Humphrey should take it back to the board of selectmen and work with Chris, and sit down with all the elected officials and come up with a plan going forward.
Yep.
And I don't think we have enough time to come up with a collaborative plan.
No, I agree.
This year, that will pass in March, but it's gonna take a lot of convincing. And presentations to change the president's mind, the way they've been voting no on the changing from elected to appointed for the last fifteen years.
I, I mean, just out of curiosity, both of you would rather not be elected? Your positions?
There's pros and cons to everything, yeah.
Uh, well, oh, right, no, but I know that's been on there.
The con, the con is this.
This. Okay, just a curious, just.
Alright, so those, those two, it's up to you now, we'll move back to, Pat's all set.
Alright, so, um, yeah, so Pat, you're, you're good.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I needed, so. Um, Nick, it's your turn. And I'm, before you start, I'm going to address the concerns that I have. So that way you can.
Just hit the button.
That way you can, um, you know, let me know, um, so, we had, um. We had tabled yours, um, basically.
One second, I'll just.
I don't know if we're gonna need, anyway, you're right. I think she wants to go through what she's got up here first.
Go ahead, Laura.
Okay, so, um, the reason why we tabled yours, um, number one was. The increase in, um, personnel, um, the, the line item that you wanted, and really. Um, it was our collective, um. Thoughts that it would be best as a warrant article. Um, I know that you did do some adjustment with your, um. Contracted services, um, I'm wondering, um. How many, you know, pagers do you actually need, um. That are new, um, I'm really thinking that if we can get that contracted services down to like eighteen K. Um, you know, that might be, whi, which it's not a huge amount, Nick, but, um.
Contract services or equipment purchases?
Or, equipment purchases, I'm sorry, I gotta get to.
Where?
Oh, you're right there, okay, yeah, so the equipment purchase line item, you've got a twenty-one percent increase, so. If we can give you some of an increase, but not, you know, the full twenty grand, I think that that might be, you know. A little bit easier to swallow. And if you, can you click on that, please? So. Um, so, you know, it looks like you, you know, you are looking for four additional pagers. Um, curiosity, are all of the pagers that you currently have out now being used?
Yeah, I got one on my desk, and I have several people that don't have ones that are working right now, um, but honestly, yeah, if you want to do eighteen grand, sure.
Okay. I mean.
I'm, look, here's the deal, you asked me to put together a budget that was true and accurate, that's been Humphrey's biggest thing since day one. Stop robbing Peter to pay Paul, we've been doing that for way too long, this is a real number. If we're, if you recognize the fact that we need far more than twenty thousand dollars, and we can work towards that together, then I, I don't care what you give me, I will work with the number that I have. But I'm just telling you that. I don't even remember what I put in for, twenty-one, twenty?
You adjusted it to twenty.
Yeah, you adjusted.
She just asked for it to be adjusted to eighteen.
Right, and I came up with thirty-one thousand, and what was the number last year? Sixteen?
Sixteen.
I'm perfectly happy with eighteen.
Alright, I'm gonna make an adjustment here.
And I realize it's not everything that you're asking for, Nick.
My point is that, everything, just like inflation and everybody here, it hits everything that we buy up there.
Uh, oh, I, and I understand that.
Buy as much with our dollar as it used to, that's why a lot of these lines have gone up.
Yeah.
And, trust me, I showed you the real number, you never would, two years ago, last year, you never would have seen these increases that I put in for. Because I always went through, created the budget, and then hacked it back to whatever I thought would be acceptable to you guys.
No, and I, and I get it, Nick, we're, we're all, we're all suffering right now.
And this has been, this has been several years.
You know.
Where I didn't even put in the raise for myself, because I tried to keep a level funded budget.
Right now my computer's acting up, so give me a second.
Hey, remind me of that recently.
Yeah, I, I mean, and, and again. Again, I'm not, I'm not trying to beat the snot out of people, but. You know, I, I just, I look at the increase and I look at the fact that. It's so hard right now, and I know you understand it just as much as everybody else does, but. You know, we have people in this town that cannot afford to buy food. They're not turning their heat on right now. And, you know, in order to keep them in their homes, we have to be at least a little bit more. Cognizant of what we're approving and what we're not.
Preaching to the choir.
So, um. Um, and then, again, I think for, if we can get the salary down. And I realize that that is a lot, has a lot to do with the ambulance and all that stuff, but. To go from a hundred and ten thousand to three hundred and thirty-five thousand, I just don't see it happening. Um, and I really, really think that we need to bring it back to the hundred and ten. And then put that to a warrant article.
I never expected that to go forward, that was under the direction of CIP, I had the conversation with them. Board of Selectmen had the conversation with them, Budget Committee last year had the conversation with them, they wanted to see the true cost of the numbers. And determine if they were gonna continue to charge it to revolving account or charge it to the budget.
Right.
So I did what I was told.
Nope, nope.
For a lot of years, I should've, it's probably my own fault, because I really should've been increasing that. Ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars a year for the last ten years, because I knew this is the number we needed to be at.
No, I get it.
And finally, it caught up to us and we can't, we can't have our cake and eat it too, so. We have prices for a new ambulance of four hundred thousand dollars and. Five years ago, that same truck was two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Six months ago, the truck was three hundred and, what was it, thirty-six? Three, six, that was two months ago, six months ago.
Nick, again, again, you're preaching to the choir, we all know that costs have gone up.
Right.
Right, you know, uh, 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 nobody.
But my only point is, the only reason that number's in there like that. Is because the revolving account can't support everything that people have expected the revolving account to support. So I showed the number in the budget, just like we've been paying for it out of the budget this year, so that bottom line where the fire department's at. Is the true cost. And I have no problem, Humphrey cut that back to one ten.
I back, we put it back to the one ten.
So I think it's already there, I, you didn't hear me arguing about that. I would like to see maybe another ten grand, if there's room for it to go up to one twenty or something, I think that would be a smarter move, but if you guys want one ten. Is where it is, I totally get it.
I was just going to ask, is there something in between the one ten and the, what did you put in there, three thirty-five? That you could live with, they could live with, and maybe do the rest of it as a warrant article?
So, my thought process was, and again, I'd like feedback from the budget committee, because. Your support is important in this, is to ask for one additional full-time employee this year via warrant article. And. I have the numbers right here. Yes, bud? So, one full-time employee. The cost is a hundred and nine thousand dollars, can I use fifteen thousand dollars for a single plan, is that somewhat accurate for placehold?
Yeah.
So fifteen thousand dollars for insurance, could be less, could be more. Um. Forty-eight hours with thirty, thirty-six hours of overtime per month, same we budgeted for the other full-time employees. Versus two part-time employees. They would work fifty-six point three hours a week between the two of them, cause I divided the overtime between them as straight time. And it came out to sixty-nine, so it's a forty thousand dollar difference. But the, the benefit of a full-time employee is they're committed to the town bill. I've explained several times that our problem is. All the part-time employees have full-time jobs, and that's where their commitment is.
They'd be replacing two part-times, the one full-time would replace.
I, granted, I wouldn't, I wouldn't get rid of the two part-time employees, they would just not have the hours.
You, yeah.
It just opens up the availability for them to work additional shifts.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, but I don't know, but I don't know if that's our decision to make, Nick. You know.
No, but, but when it comes forward, we, we've had the discussion. And it's gonna say recommended by the budget committee or not, so I'd like to take the time to get feedback, if you say no, I'm not gonna support it. Just put a warrant article up for a hundred thousand dollars to go to the part-time line, then that's what I'll do, cause I want your support, cause we need to do something. So I'm kinda giving you some options and I'd like feedback, just like I've asked for feedback from the selectmen for the last two years. Um, and haven't really gotten solid direction to go in, everybody agrees that it's a problem, nobody's saying we're overstaffing. They just don't wanna pay for it, or don't know how to pay for it, I guess. And I don't know if I'm not doing a good job explaining the problem, or if nobody wants to make a decision.
Well, and this is, this is what's the main reason why I asked you for information on hours worked. And.
And, and I wasn't trying to be disrespectful, but the information you were asking doesn't compute to this problem.
But it does.
I saw what she asked, it does, it does, it depends on how you're looking at it, Nick.
Okay.
She was asking about when the things, when it's not manned.
Yeah.
Because you're trying to fix a manning issue.
Right.
So, it, so in that respect, you've got two part-time employees on your, on your thing up here. And you're looking to go back to another full-time employee, I know previous board said no, last year.
It was a money thing, I don't think they were against it, because at the same time.
All I'm, I wasn't there, so I'm saying, I know it was a no the last time it was brought up.
But at the same time, the board had asked me to determine if we could. Move part-time money to a full-time line and hire one with, within the budget, and I told them no, because as you can see, it's a forty thousand dollar difference.
Well, the thing is, is it's a forty thousand dollar difference for that one person, plus. It, and, and that, cause I need, I need to see what you had up there again, because that's, hang on, I was gonna show you this, this is.
I can figure out how to get bigger here. Well, this is right, this gap right here from, oh, it's like seven o'clock around here. To about six o'clock, that's the highest call volume, so these are calls per hour of the day. So this eight to four is the gap that I'm trying to put an extra person on. Because today was a perfect example, Jason and Tiffany are on duty. They went up to a call, and I was here in a department meeting, and there was another call, so I was the only one around to go to that call, we had a call Farmington. Farmington was on another call already, so luckily they had a second, their second truck, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, was able to come over, so, we all work together, they're short-staffed, we're short-staffed.
Everyone is.
Everybody's short-staffed, but we still have these calls that we need to take care of.
Oh, I, I understand that completely, but seeing that doesn't help me determine.
I know.
Who's, who's at the fire station, who's not at the fire station, and how many, you know, how many people are there and not, and.
So. So when you're, when you're asking that, at what point in time that the station is unmanned. Every single call that we go on, we need staff to work appropriately.
Right.
So that station is unmanned, so it could be six o'clock in the morning, it could be twelve o'clock in the afternoon, or it could be three o'clock in the morning.
And by the way, hold on, hold on, by the way, Jason, she's not asking, when you guys were on the call, that piece of it.
No, no, no.
You were manned at that time.
Right.
The concern is, nobody, nobody was on duty for the, for the, for the timeframe, no, so it's more. When you had nobody on duty.
And somebody, and Farmington had to get called in, or, or whatever, you know, how many shifts is Nick? How many, how many shifts is Nick covering, you know, how many calls is he going on? Because there's nobody in, in the station. You know what I mean?
I'm not available all the time either, I work a full-time job as well, so I'm the same boat as everybody.
I know.
And, there's no good way, we don't have a way, tell me if I'm wrong, but we don't have a way to track. When, when there's nobody on duty, which is rare, but it happens, and I'm trying to eliminate it.
But you're paying, you're paying people for the time they're there, so you must know when there's somebody, when there's nobody there. So, and that's what she's asking, because what we're trying, what she's trying to figure out and what all of this is, is. Okay, how much do you really need, you know, a- a- and, and they weren't privy to the conversations that we had, that, that. Uh, in regarding manning, because I know you talk about a roster of thirty-five people. And, but you got tw- you got twenty-four people supposedly covering shifts, but the reality, when we were talking. Tyler and, and Jason and you and I, I says, what's your real? The people that you really rely on, cause if you've got some people on that twenty-four that you're getting once or twice. Even if it's only once or twice in a month, or once or twice every six, that makes a big difference.
Yeah.
What's your real number of people that you can count on, and I know people work, and I worked when I was in the fire department before. And volunteered, but the, but it comes down to how many times, ti- you know, date and time. That there was nobody assigned to that position.
Anybody.
In other words, nobody was paid because the, the station didn't have any manning at all, it's not you were on a call. It's the, it's the times when nobody was there, because that was the, that was part of the issue. When I talked with you about Columbus Day, it's like, nobody's here.
So, did everybody get, get a chance to look at this chart?
I did, but it really made no sense.
Those are numbers that doesn't tell you days, dates and time.
Let me explain it to you, then, these are names over here on the left, blacked out, because who they are doesn't matter. The hours is how many hours they work each month. Okay, hang on.
Yep.
The total hours is how many hours were covered and somebody was being paid that month, so we'll go to June. And it's fourteen hundred and sixty-four hours. To have the station.
Four, maybe there's two calls, like you said. So this doesn't give a picture, you, you know, you're only using fifteen, sixty hours and there's hours that aren't covered. But you could have fifteen hundred and sixty hours of people working and still have days that it's not covered.
I mean, just myself alone, I work two hundred and sev- on schedule, two hundred and seventy hours a month.
Is, is there any way that you could get us, how, what was covered just in November? So on November first, these were the shifts, this is when people were there, and that would get, and then that would show where there were gaps. And how, and you could just do employee A, employee B, I mean, you don't, like, you don't have to give names.
I know what you're saying, but it's not as easy as what you're asking me to do. I'll pull up the schedule, but the schedule won't.
But what about, what about that e-pay, that, what about your e-planner? Your e-planner that you use to, for payroll?
I use it for payroll, I use it for scheduling, but it, it's so fluid all the time. That it's not gonna show, like, hang on a second, let me.
So you couldn't look at Tyler's name and, and, and look at how many hours, how many days?
Exactly how many hours he worked.
Okay.
A- and when?
And when.
So why couldn't you do that for the whole month of November, and, and that wouldn't necess-
Do you know how long that would take me to do every, I don't know if I could do that.
Let me, hey, let me ask, let me ask this of you, Nick, okay? Because I underst- the concern that she asked, cause I, I read what was written down when you answered this and everything else. The real, the real issue comes down to the public wanting, right, the, the issue comes down to what dates and times. There was nobody assigned to work, because everybody was working, nobody was available. That's the concern, because that meant nobody could go out on a call, you have to rely on someone else. And somehow, when you're going through your day-to-day, and, cause it's not to go back, and obviously going backwards is tough. But when you're looking at, when you're looking at a monthly thing, I went by the station the other night, there was nobody there. I don't know if somebody was on a call, or if there was nobody there. But if, I went by it, cause there was no vehicles there, and the lights were off.
Every parts were back.
No, I'm saying, but every light was off, it was also during, it was, it was early in the day. But, I, I just said, I don't know, that's my point.
Turned the lights on at noon when I went in there today, and there were two people there all day, just saying, that doesn't mean.
But no, but anyways, my point though is, is it looks like it's unmanned and the trucks were there, so, is it unmanned or not? You underst- and, and I know, Jason, you're there more often than the others, it's like, when, when you're there. But again, that's right, but my point though is, is you're still only covering X number of shifts, and right now, more than you should be, but. It's, it's the, it's the times, it's the times, it's the times that it's, there's nobody else there. You by yourself is very limited on what you can do.
And Nick, you even had said at one of the meetings that, um, Pat, can I help you with something? I was trying to talk to Nick.
I was trying to explain what you guys were looking for.
Okay, thank, thank you, um, so, and here's, here's my thing, um. I wanna be able to say I fully support adding a full-time person. Because I, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that you don't need it. I wish you could show me, you know, I, I, not that I don't take your word for it, but.
In order to prove it to our, the people.
Right. Want our support to, to work on, with the voters, we need to.
How do I make this better?
Get a bigger screen.
Or maybe we could all just have twenty-twenty vision again, um, yeah. Yeah. Is there a zoom?
Yeah. I think, that's not.
Yeah.
Anyway, this is.
That's your scheduler?
That's the schedule for the month.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna go to.
And I know that you said that it, um.
I'm gonna show you my problem, this is my problem right there.
It changes.
Soon as I get to it. Boy, it'd be real nice.
Tyler's there like twenty-four hours a day.
You can see that?
No.
I can see Sunday the twenty-fifth, there's nobody currently in your schedule, but that's Christmas, we get that, so.
So, let me show you availability, so I hit that button, everybody gives me availability, now I can pick who's working the shifts. So, if you look at twelve thirty-one, I had one person that gave availability, right here. Now let's go to, this is a work in progress schedule, I don't know why that keeps going like that. You should probably do that. Here's one one, one person gave availability. Then, I've got this day, Friday, the sixth, I have, I don't know, eight different people.
Yeah.
Then we go to Saturday, oh, great, I got three people to work Saturday, but three of them are first responders, I can't have two first responders working together. And one of them is a medic that's not a firefighter, so I don't have a crew to put on that shift.
So.
And if I continue on for the rest of the month, it's the same. This thing does not like projecting.
So, my question is, so when you're going through this, and like, for instance, you don't have anybody. You have one person that's willing to work on, on the first, um. If you hire a full-time person, are they gonna have set hours that they have to be there?
So Jason has set hours, Monday, Thursday, is where he works. If I have a day, like this Friday right here, the thirteenth, obviously not Jason's day, but I got plenty of people that work that day, so let's go to a different day.
Essentially what the chief is saying is, we can move, move Jason a day, as long as he gets his forty-eight hours that week that he's paid by the town.
Okay.
We can shift our full-timers to a weekday, so, like chief said, January is a fluid schedule right now. Jason's set for every Monday and Thursday, but that's guaranteed, he's not gonna work every Monday and Thursday, because we're gonna have to move him for coverage.
So back, so back to the other piece of this, so we've, we're up here, it's the thirteenth of December. You're telling me you can't look back from December first through the December thirteenth and tell us when you didn't have coverage?
I'll show you, I'll show you what I can do, and you'll.
To me, I mean, to, I think that's a. To me, I mean, to, I think that's, and I really do believe, for your own sake, it's important to understand when you don't have coverage, that's a part of what Laura's asking for. And I think every member up here is saying, before we can say yes, go ahead and go forward, and we, we approve of it, it's like, what's the ish?
Because I honestly, I honestly do believe that you need more help.
Oh, yeah.
I, 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 there's no doubt in my mind.
It's beyond, it's beyond just one.
Right.
It's a function appropriate.
Right, right, but you also had said, Nick, in, in, in a presentation or in a meeting at one point with, with us, that you had.
So.
One person go in, and they didn't feel comfortable working alone, so they left.
Yeah.
And so, well, no, that's what you said.
No, that, actually, you did, you said they did not stay that day, and that's the, when I went, that was the day I went, and nobody was there.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's, to me, nobody there is a bigger prob- I mean, is a problem, only one person that can't do much by themselves is just as big a problem.
Right.
Here's a shift, twenty-fourth, I got one person, two, well, that's split, so that's.
Again, that's future plan, I'm looking to find out what's happened, that's just the twenty-fourth, I'm curious, between the first and, and the tw- you know, and today.
I think you need to change password.
You really wanna mess with them, change it for them.
If anybody wants to hack me, that's the password.
Please don't.
So, ignore the bottom line, because this is something new I'm adding, that's not, that's something in the future that I'm working on.
Alright, so let's look at Saturday the third, Saturday the third, you had coverage from six to six, right?
So basically the shift.
So six AM to, I mean, that's, that's twenty-four hour coverage, for those two, right?
I think it's, I think it's sixteen hundred, is that four?
Yep.
No, it says six to six, right?
Six to six, six to six, that was covered.
So they had, so you had, that was covered, you had two people in, on, uh, and, and I'm looking, because your bottom one, you got, that's, those are admin, I don't know what admin days are.
They're not supposed to say that, it's like I said, I'm, that's a work in progress.
So, if I'm looking up there, it looks like you pretty much got coverage every day from the twenty-seventh of November through the third.
That's what I'm saying, we, we do, because Jason works his butt off to make phone calls every single day, so, last Friday.
Yeah.
I, I think, can you look at a report seeing that you're, whatever it is, that you make shifts?
No, that's what I showed them, and that wasn't what they're looking for.
No, he's showing, okay, here, here's the problem with showing hours and not showing it shift by shift what's not there. Again, if you've got three, if you've got four people on, during the shift, you got a call, and you got four people in, or whatever it might be. But you could have had that from, from six to, to twelve, but from twelve to six, and it looks like you had coverage, no, but I'm saying, hours-wise, four peo- hear me out. Hours-wise, six to twelve, with four people, and nobody from twelve to six, is the same as two and two. It's mathematic- that's math, that's not covering the shift.
I don't staff that way.
I'm, I'm saying you're staffing that way, Nick, but it doesn't tell us that.
But when we see just numbers of hours, we don't see the differential between those two, whether it's four people all at once, or two and two. And I think that's what I, I.
Your con- no, because your comment to, to Laura and, and me, when you sent the response back, was fifteen hundred and sixty hours covers it.
Mm-hmm.
And that's if you ideally have your Manning for every shift.
Right.
But you're gonna tell me that the only time you have fifteen, sixty, is when you only manned it ideally?
Yeah, we don't, we don't have a.
So, so, when you do your payroll, that would be, you do your fourteen, right, is that what it is, fourteen to cover the entire week as far as?
Fourteen shifts, yeah, and three eights.
So. And three eights, so, looking at those weeks that we didn't have the full fourteen.
Yep.
That's what we're after.
Right, because I think what we're trying to understand is, if we go ahead with like another full-time person, are we still gonna have?
The same gaps.
Shifts that are not.
Absolutely.
And so that, I think that's what we're trying to.
So, I guess that's a part of it, how do you sit there and say, yes, go ahead with another full-timer, that fixes the problem, no, it doesn't.
Trying to justify that.
No, it's a step in the right direction to fix the problem, but this is a, this is another example right here, this day right here was filled, and we've, we've taken the people off. Last Friday was filled, one person called out because they had sick kids, and one person called out, because they had the flu.
So you had no.
And Jason worked twenty-four hours overtime.
Yeah.
Sunday, one person went home at six-thirty in the morning.
And that, I know that's what we wanna get away from.
Because they came in with the flu, and we get somebody to come in.
So, so let me ask you this, Nick, on that schedule, on that schedule that shows Jason's name.
Yep.
And then it shows ZZ, closed shift, and then it shows Tiffany.
Yep. Yep.
Okay, was Tiffany there?
Yep.
Okay, so, and again, thank you.
The people that were, the people that called out.
So you ended up, you ended up with coverage because she came in, and he covered it, oh, you were already working, because he covered it, okay.
No, she was already working. Yeah.
Alright, that's what I was.
And there was one of these eight-hour shifts that somebody was working, and they called out. And then the twenty, the other twenty-four hour person called out, and then Sunday, same thing, I mean, let's see if I got Sunday filled in correctly.
So.
The eleventh. So, this person worked. This person covered from nine to six, and then this person covered from twenty-one to zero-six, so there's an example of what you're looking for. Those were the open shifts that day.
Yeah.
Right, but again, and that's, that's what she's asking.
Is there no place that you can get reports out of this, is there, in that administration tab?
Not, this, like, I'll show you the reports that I can get, one of them is the one that I sent you, and they're all similar to that.
So, I, I, it just.
You know, a- and I. Yeah, alright.
I mean, 'cause, yes, it would be a lot of work, but I do feel you could like manually pull all this over to a.
A ca- a calendar of, of sorts, similar to what you showed me, when you're going to do your Manning, you print out a calendar before the month.
Yeah, this calendar right here, it's a monthly calendar.
Okay, right, but I'm saying, before you get started, so when you show this calendar, if you had a calendar that, on that, here's, here's my take.
Can you go backward?
If you had a calendar that you, and even if, and I understand this manual, but I'm saying, let's look going forward, Nick.
Yep.
And you turn around and here, on this day, this given day, and went, didn't have it or something, and you marked that calendar somehow, that's a much bigger picture to people.
Oh, yeah.
Can you go backward to November?
Here's the gaps that we've had and why we need the people.
But, but here's the thing, I.
You got people that can help you with that.
A lot of times, we, we scrape and scrounge to fill the shifts.
Oh, I get it.
And that's why Jason has eight hundred hours overtime.
Could you go, could you go through this?
I get it.
This isn't a true picture of, it's not, like, we can't rely on Jason working eight hundred hours overtime every year.
We, yes, we fully understand.
Right.
So, if I took Jason off of this, then you'd be the only one looking for him.
I'm not, I'm not asking, I'm not asking this because I disagree that you need anybody, I'm asking this because I wanna help you, Nick, get what you need.
And, and maybe highlight that, the ones that were, you, you are working extensive overtime with, you know, and say, you know, we'd love to, like, not have him do this.
You know, because, to be perfectly honest with you, if people understood that he was Chief Kraus Junior.
This was, this was a strain.
With the amount of hours that he's working, it, it would be a whole lot easier, Nick, for, for us to say, you know what? This is why we need to do this.
And I haven't done the math, but you said eight hundred and how many hours of overtime?
So, from January to July, it was eight hundred and fourteen hours.
Yeah, and that's.
And then the last statistic that he had put out was, just in overtime, it was, it was four hundred and eighty-two.
Stupid. Right, and that, and that is.
Looking at twelve, twelve and a half hundred, yeah.
Stupid, and understanding that, I'm here to say, I'm.
That's an average of twenty-three a week.
Right.
And you multiply that by time and a half, that's almost a full-time person right there.
Exactly, and I'm happy, happy to say.
Can you just help me, I think you've just helped yourself, highlight the ha- the, all the overtime he's working, go back through the schedule and highlight it.
Exactly.
That should, you, because you said it yourself, and I was waiting for this thing.
That's almost, almost a full-time person.
That's showing you how you pay for another full-time person.
Can you print that and do that?
Yeah, that would help, yeah, even this.
This schedule right here?
Yeah, if you highlight all the overtime.
Yeah, even that would help.
You have to highlight, you have to tell us the things that are wrong with this.
But it looks full.
No, 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 but Nick.
No, but you got.
But if you highlight, this is, it's only full, because he's, he's worked eighty thousand extra hours.
I think, I think.
Do you, you know what we're asking?
Eight hours, what you're asking.
Yes, because that's what, that's your selling point, he's working all those hours without it, you're paying for somebody else, okay?
Thank you.
And, and if you needed help, I'd be willing to come down to the fire station and help, like, and show you, like, okay, can we highlight this and highlight that?
I mean, well, let's talk about.
I'd be willing to help with anything you need.
I have it all here, I'm not hiding any, I didn't.
No, 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 I know, you just.
We know you're not hiding anything.
Nobody's saying hiding it, it's how do you sell it?
Absolutely not.
Right.
To me, and I, and I'm gonna, Nick, I wanna share the same comment with the budget committee that I shared with you and your guys. It's the same thing with trying to get people in, because you're trying to get names off the roster that aren't showing up. My comment to you then was, you wanna sell something, you gotta sell it to the public.
Yeah.
Have the meeting with the people that show up, and, and with the people that you can't get in all the time, find out why those that come in are so committed. And what do you do to help with those that aren't?
No, I.
Because, but, but my point though is, that's a way to help put some pressure on getting that type of support. The public will understand the dilemma that much more.
Yeah.
And doing what, and if Tyler's got it, highlighting all the times Jason's had to work extra, or somebody else had to be called in at the last minute to do it. His is gonna be the biggest piece of it, it's the time and a half piece he's putting in.
And the wear and tear on his body, crying out loud, really be honest, you know, and, and understand, and understanding that.
That helps you understand. Yeah, that helps you understand the need.
You know, and, and understand, and understanding that, or the fact that Tiffany is covering extra hours, or, you know, anybody really for that matter. If you put those numbers down, Nick, if you put those numbers down, it will explain to the, to the people why it's so imperative.
See, you said it best now, than asking for an extra sixteen or twenty-four hours is asking for more.
Ever.
Saying that you're asking for an extra twenty-four, to take the extra overtime out of his pocket, I mean, not saying his money-wise, but, so he's not faced with all of that. Is a wash, and it helps you get the Manning.
Yeah.
But what won't happen is, if you're asking for the extra twenty-four, and he's still working all that overtime, because that's the thing that needs to be curbed.
Eight hundred hours of overtime.
He shouldn't be working all the extra hours, but you can ask for something and then continue, you know, paying for the other piece of it.
And I think that, and it should be too, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I, i- i- in, in all reality, more.
Right, oh, yeah, and, and, uh, you know.
But my point is, is you figure out how to cover that, that's, that's all.
Yeah.
My, having the extra full-time body, so we'll have, if this goes through, we get it, we'll have three, that's a hundred and fifty hours roughly. A week, as opposed to, right now, we have, we're down a full-time person, who starts next moment.
Right.
So that overtime would be split two ways potentially, because we still have the part-time people, that when their full-time job calls, they're going. And when their kid is sick, their, their priority is, I'm gonna go take care of my kid, not come work for the metal fire department for nineteen, twenty dollars an hour. And until you get at least four full-time people to have that stability, the problem will continue.
And I understand that, but let's, let's take baby steps, Nick.
I understand, that's why I'm saying.
You know, I, I.
If I get one, I can work with it, and then we'll see where we're at.
Can we go back to those numbers?
Sure.
For that one, and the two part-time, that, that others, because, i- i- if I'm hearing what you're saying correctly.
Yeah.
Because I know that you're not gonna get rid of the two-part-time, because you need to fill the hours, but it looks like, right now that they are doing fifty-six hours. You are going to gain the, the difference between.
So the, the fifty-six hours, see how I have overtime per month?
That's how much they. Right, so they cover, the, the two-part-time employees cover fifty-six hours, the one full-time is gonna cover more than that. It's going to cover what?
No, it'd be the same, it'd be the same thing.
Forty-eight plus thirty-six?
No, forty-eight plus thirty-six.
Forty-eight per week plus thirty-six per month.
Thirty-six. Oh, the thirty-six per mo- oh, okay, I, okay, I didn't look that.
Yeah.
Divide that by four.
So, but, but, yeah, I mean, okay.
Now, that's one, that's one person.
No, I know, but you divide the thirty-six by four and add it to the forty-eight.
That's what I did, yes, because they were straight time, just so the hours were the same, dollar for, or hour for hour, bottom line.
Yeah. Yeah. Yep. Yep.
But what you gotta be able to sell when you're selling this is, it's not add that and then keep this.
And that forty thousand.
You understand, because you're talking, that, that's what you gotta be careful of, is what's coming off as you're adding one.
What's coming off is the burden on the revolving account, right?
That's, that's a piece of it, yeah.
Possible off savings in overtime.
And the possible savings in overtime.
Right, and I think that that's a piece you don't have up there, is how much you're gonna save by, that he's not gonna have to cover the shifts and get overtime for it.
And that's what you have to.
That piece, I think, need, is, is, because it's what, it's fifty-six hours of overtime that you're paying elsewhere.
Straight time, straight time costs less than overtime, that's part of your selling point.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's the big, that's the biggest piece of it.
And a lot of Jason's overtime, it's not, it's not scheduled overtime that people don't give availability, it's callouts.
Right.
I understand that, that's, but again, that's.
No.
Yeah, but, again, you gotta explain that to people.
I just wanna be perfectly clear that, we'll have three people covering shifts, a hundred and fifty hours a week, three full-time people. There's nothing saying they're not gonna call out, and I don't have any part-time's available, it, it just, it comes.
You can't help all of that, y- y- yeah, you, you.
And there's still gonna be seven, uh, so two, four, six. Eight, eight shifts with part-time people, instead of ten shifts with part-time people. So it makes it better, increases the probability of a part-timer not calling out, because they're committed to something else. But it doesn't eliminate the problem.
We know that, we know that, and again, yeah.
Ever, sorry, ever, when you're, aside from someone calling out, are you working on the schedule, like, you're saying, okay, they gave me availability? Are you like, you're manually doing all that every week, month?
I do it, so, I'll show you how it works, just so I don't ever have to come back and explain it to you guys again.
Because I've managed schedules, and I understand how.
Alright, so, the employee by the fifteenth of the month has to submit availability. This is the month they click the shifts that are available for, that. Then I can go to availability report, and this is where everybody's available, these are all the shifts that people can work. Then, I can go to availability submission, which I have to look at to make sure everybody submitted availability. So this is everybody that submitted availability for January, and there's a couple people that didn't, so I had to call them and say, hey, you need to get your availability in, because I'm gonna do the schedule. Then, I have to come over here to the weekly spreadsheet.
There's gotta be a better friggin software system.
And.
That's, that's, that's my.
No way.
For the amount of money that you're paying for the.
This is, this is, this is, this is been the best, the one that we've had so far.
So much better.
Okay, somebody get on designing something, so this is.
So.
I think Excel would be better than that.
So let me, let me ask you this, Nick, without going too far, is that a typical, that looked like fifteen people could commit to you sometimes?
Hold on, hold on, one second.
Okay.
Probably, yeah, for per diem, yeah.
Okay. So, not twenty-four?
Yeah, not that original number that we got, like we talked about in that meeting, you know, there's only five dedicated callers in this town, probably.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Yeah.
But again, big, that's the big piece, that's another big piece of this, saying thirty-five or twenty-four, or what is it?
Yeah.
So then, all that availability shows up here, so, yeah, it looks like I have six people on this day, but again, I have to match skill sets.
Gets the blood in, yeah.
Yeah.
With lots of other things, it is more than just six names that I gotta plug in, I can't.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, 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 oh, yeah, yeah.
So, how much time are you sp- would you say you spend on?
On a good month, I can do it in like, two, two hours, I spent probably forty-five minutes on it the other day, and I got, I don't know, halfway done. And then I got the tricky parts left, that it, like, this doesn't work, so now I gotta call Jason up and be like, hey, I, can you work this day? Because I have these people that can only work this day, and that's gonna take me another hour or so, but, so, prior to this. Sent the message out, hey, I need availability, everybody texted me their availability, I got a piece of paper.
Text, paper. Alright, I take that back there.
This is so much better.
Yeah, I, I take that back.
And every single day they could work, so.
That was Cape Manway.
Tyler, one, three, seven, ten, and then these twelve-hour nights, and these, and then I had a full sheet of paper with everybody's name on it. And then I had a Word document, Word document that I printed, handwritten and pencil.
You need to learn Excel.
I guess, I guess my concern is, you know, just, you know, we're looking at this, and I see, you know, things that say part-time, but it's not really part-time.
Yeah.
We're talking about more like per diem, like, just, instead of, like, having part-time dedicated employees that they work every Tuesday, this, and this, or every.
Per diem.
Yeah.
We're talking about more like per diem, like just instead of like having part-time dedicated employees that they work every Tuesday, this, this, or every.
And I think the wording needs to be updated.
Because that's that is your sales pitch.
Exactly.
I guess that's, I agree with you because I was under the impression that most people don't know what per diem means.
No, I think more people.
I think today more than ever people know what per diem means.
That's a mainstream word now.
Well, then there is no part-time people except for me.
Okay.
So I think the public needs to know that because looking at this stuff, I'm like, okay, well, if we have all these part-time employees, where, you know, what's happening?
Right, right.
So I think people need to understand that we've got our full-time and then we've got just this list. That we just hope that somebody on this list shows up, you know.
So.
It's just, it's way too unreliable.
Yeah, so what you need to do.
Part-time indicates that you've got a schedule and set times, and you don't, and we know that.
We don't have any part-time.
I know that.
And I think that's where, especially with, you know, being new on this, I was like looking at this and that's really where the hang-up is. And I think a lot of the public assumes that our part-time, you know, we have part-time people that are there.
Sure when you.
So, that'll be really, I think, something to clarify.
I think clarifying the word choices.
These hours are here, that's why I was trying to show you that.
Right, but see, that, if you showed that to the town, they'd be like WTF, is this, you know? Cause I looked at that Nick and went, okay, yeah.
So why did I understand that?
All those people, I can tell you, like who these people are based on the hours.
I tell you, when I get out of this right now Nick, when I get out of this and I'm hoping that the budget committee.
Somebody worked forty hours in jail.
Twenty-four, twelve, and I'm looking at a six-month timeframe, that is somebody you don't count on, period.
Right.
And to keep them on the roster and to have them with equipment and to have them sitting there with whatever they've got is a waste of your efforts. And it's a waste, and even if they say, I can cover four hours this weekend, I'm sorry, it's not worth that kind of effort. So you gotta focus your attention on some of that.
This twelve-hour person right here. He worked September, October, and.
But that's twelve hours in a whole month.
Alright, I get it, but Sunday night, he came in at nine o'clock, so and worked with Kayla.
Okay, but even still.
Otherwise she would've been by herself, so that's why there's things going on in a lot of these people's lives that don't. That make it so they're not available to commit the hours that they probably did at one point. But they're committed to the department and when they are available, they will work. And when things in their life change, like I think that one right there is probably in medic school?
Yes.
In medic school, so he does not have have time to work full-time for the fire department that he works for.
But it's.
Have a life, go to medic school.
All I'm saying, I'm not saying don't use him if he's available, my comment is it's not someone you can count on. You gotta go up through and figure out, that's why I kept coming back to what's the real number that you can count on month in and month out.
Right.
And I really believe that number was closer to somewhere between twelve and fifteen, which is what we talked about. And that is something that you need to be able to iterate to the public.
Right.
Because.
This one right here?
That's not a lot.
Started a new full-time job and was not available.
Yeah, but again.
But happened to be available seventy hours for some weird reason that.
Right, but again. It's how you have to sell, and I and I hate to say it because, but it's what you gotta do as a department head. You've gotta sell to the people. That you can't have somebody working six hundred and twenty-nine hours in a month. You need to break this up a little bit, you need to have more people, you can't have, you know, somebody working twenty-three hundred friggin' hours in a month.
Basically, what she's telling you is we don't need to see the name on that top line.
No. But again.
But that's reality.
But reality is, but reality is. You know, but reality is, you cannot, you know, you've gotta be able to. Put that to the people that they understand, you don't have part-time people. You have people that are on per diem that come in when when they can, if they can. You have a shit-ton of people that call out and you have my full-time people working ungodly amounts of hours. Here's what I'm asking, you know, I'm paying this person probably thousands of dollars in overtime. When in reality, I could take some of that overtime money that I'm paying him. And apply that to a new full-time person to give that person a break. That's what you need to tell the people, that's how you need to sell that, Nick.
Okay.
You know, and it's not saying that nobody agrees with you that you need help.
Right.
We know you do, we're just trying to tell you how to get it. So, you know, and and. Saying I don't know or I can't get that information is not helping your cause. Because I will support you a hundred and fifty percent and I know everybody else on this board will do the same. You just gotta give us the information so we can help you do that, okay?
Do what I can.
Okay.
I just, it's hard for me to understand what you're asking.
I know, I know, and I'm not always, so I.
Tyler's got it now because again.
I get it now.
Figure figure the holes, the holes are the extra stuff that shouldn't be worked.
The email, it's a living thing, so like it could look full today and tomorrow morning there could be two people.
We understand that, but but here's what you can't change, here's what you can't change Nick, you can't change the past and that's the information that we're looking at. What's already happened.
Yeah.
But we do a really good job of filling those shifts and there's very, very few.
And that's why if you highlighted the things that were, that you, that were, hey, we did the best we could and. We really would love to change this, like that we could, we can sell that, so because people are gonna ask the budget committee, hey, what is this about?
Your feelings on that?
And we and we're putting our names behind it and peo- we have to sell it to them, so you sell it to us and we sell it to them.
Think of it in terms of you're gonna do a presentation at the deliberative session, cause you will be. It's in, that deliberative session is a sales pitch.
Yeah.
And like anything else, if you don't have the right information for a sales pitch. Then it doesn't, then it doesn't go forward with, you know, without a lot of obstacles in its way, so. You help clear the obstacles by having the information, I use I use the law, you know, in God we trust, all others bring data.
And and here's the thing, people are gonna be very, very, very prickly this year. At the deliberate obsession session, so you need to have all of the data, kill them with data. You know, because that's gonna just help your cause.
And if you need someone to run your presentation by, give me a call, I'll tell you if you're selling or if you're not helping your case.
Okay.
We're willing to help.
I, I got that. I just hope you understand like that I'm not trying to block information, I just.
I understand a hundred percent.
Of this computer.
Especially looking, especially looking at that. Especially looking at what, you know, what you've got, but yeah, no, no, I understand, you're not trying to hide anything at all. And, you know, and we're not trying to beat you into submission either, so. No, really, I'm not, I really just wanna have, I'm very data-driven, okay? And that's probably why I was asked to be the chair, um, and and I apologize if I come off. A little strong, but it is my duty. To make sure that I am covering all the bases, because you know, when the taxpayers get pissed off, they're not coming to you. They're coming to us to say, why didn't you stick up for us? So, I wanna be able to to do what you need, but I gotta answer to them too.
I get it.
So.
Trust me.
Alright guys, are we good? Thank you, all of you, very much, we, I appreciate everything that you all do.
Thank you.
And we'll, we'll figure it out.
Anything else on the budget besides the?
No, that was it, Nick, that was it.
And like I said, if you can give a little bit more to that part-time line, it would help.
We'll look at it.
We need to save the revolving account, and right now there's two hundred thousand dollars in there.
I know, and you're saving that for an ambulance, so.
Trying to, we'll see what the selectmen do next month with the overage button, or next week.
Not next month, I was gonna say, we don't have a next month for this.
No, okay, anybody else have anything?
I'll give you your computer back.
Thanks guys, really appreciate it.
Basically just call, what your, what your task is now is call for a vote, I, so that we'll wrap up, we did.
Yeah.
She, so that everyone on the committee knows Laura's suggestion was reducing the equipment purchased eighteen thousand at this point. Now going back to what we did last time was to just, how does everybody feel? Is there anything in here that you have a hard spot with, or, I know it'll come up in a second, it's gonna take a moment for it to.
Peg brought it up, but can we like, to help them, but can we like split the difference? Not do the full as a warrant article, but do half in the budget.
I think that we can look at that part-time budget and see if there, that we can add some in there.
And we, yeah, we can't decide if there's a warrant article or not, but, you know.
I think.
Yeah, that's what I suggested too, is can we keep something in the budget?
Not just what the deal is, like.
And I think, yeah, and we can definitely look at that and discuss that, yes.
And I think that, I understand the whole budget needs to be on a default, so I'm not asking for.
No.
But if there's ten thousand dollars left, under default, maybe two, three, four, everything tick where we need to be. And then the other thing is, kinda sounds like the selectmen are leaning towards a lease of the ambulance. With some being taken from the revolving fund, which that'll make a huge difference in having revolving fund money available to.
Exactly.
Take a couple of years to get to the staffing level that we, as long as we incrementally recognize that we need to get there.
Yeah, yeah.
And not leave it at.
Yeah, and I know that the leasing has worked well.
And dumb question though, when you lease it, because we now own the ambulance, is it correct?
Correct.
Where's the lease payment going to go, come out of?
It would come out of contract services, we would have, we would still have to pay for it.
I know, so I mean it would.
Well, the revolving fund, right?
Excuse me, it would be part of the budget, because yeah, we have a contract, we go into the default budget, the regular budget, and we have to pay that.
I saw the lease payment would come out of the revolving fund.
I don't know if you can make lease payments out of the revolving fund, it sounded like the selectmen wanted to take it out of the budget to preserve the revolving fund for.
I just, I've I've seen it a few times, cause I was, and the CIP, we were talking about it too, like I've heard, I I've heard from you Nick so many times.
But again, um. Look at, look at the way the PD does theirs, theirs are all leased as well.
But if we, if we're bringing in two hundred thousand dollars a year in revolving fund, two hundred thousand dollars.
That's, that's a, that's a full, yeah, that's a full-time person.
But it doesn't pay for the ambulance, so if we can get the ambulance out of the revolving fund and make it a lease payment in the budget. That frees up seventy thousand dollars a year that we should be putting away for the ambulance to go toward staffing and then not. You gotta pay for it over here or over here, it's a matter of how you wanna do it.
Right.
Uh, and another thi- so another thing that you said that you, you know, the, that you were requested to see what you thought an actual budget could be. But you weren't expecting that, uh, you were expecting it to be dropped from what you presented.
Oh absolutely.
Maybe next year do the same thing, this is what I'd like, but I know this isn't realistic and as we talked last year, say, but this is what I think is reasonable. This is what I'd love in an ideal utopia, that, you know, if we had as much money as we could, but.
Oh, they'd be another million dollars on that.
Well, you know what I mean though, but it, and I think that might've been some of the confusion this this year, because you were coming, like the selectmen, everybody, the CIP, everybody said. Hey, bring us a real thing to stop the pay, you know, the the revolving fund thing and and bring us the real budget. And that's what you did, but I think it also gave us sticker shock and gave the, uh, but next time. No, no, you were, you did what you were asked, but it is a suggestion for next year, maybe bring us the sticker shock and say, I know this isn't realistic, this is what I would love to be. This is what I, yeah, it might be a good suggestion just for, just for peace and.
I guess maybe one of the things that I wanted to make sure people understood though, is you lease the ambulances. And all of a sudden, I mean, the budget and the taxes are going to go up. Because that is going to be a huge thing that is going into the default, into the operating budget. And yeah, you'll be building back up maybe, but I just, I mean, it's, it's like, okay, do we here or do we there? Which one do we do?
But you're not even gonna get, you're not even gonna get, you can't even get an ambulance for another year, right? Even if you ordered it today.
If we're putting it up to bid, if we ordered it in a month, it'd be the.
Fourth order of, wow.
Twenty-four months.
Twen- twenty-four months, so there's plenty of time to save that revolving fund.
Correct.
And and to buy it, to buy it.
Still what I'm hoping, that's why like my plea to the selectmen is let the overage go.
Here, so that it, so that it's not gonna get.
Hundred and forty grand in the revolving fund.
Right, and then.
Pull out.
It's it's the same thing as, you know.
Or next year staffing if we don't have money left over.
And the interest for leasing too, I I mean, I've been there, done that, it's just.
That we would have enough in the revolving account once it's delivered, cause no payments due until it's delivered.
As long as we don't keep robbing them for staffing, there'll be plenty to buy.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
So.
Alright guys, so, let's do this. Let's bring the, bring it down to eighteen for the.
Which we did.
Which we did, okay, so that's already done, so. Where is our? Where is the, so the BOS proposed, okay.
Right here. If we go, if we do what we did and we had the joint meeting, it's calling for a vote on, do you agree with the numbers as they are identified now?
Yeah, from the, from the.
From the suggested right here.
Yeah.
In other words, I put your eighteen thousand down, but are the other numbers agreeable by the committee members?
And then, I don't think we had any questions about those, did we?
No, that's what I'm saying, that's, well, that's what, but that's what's left the vote on because we tabled it. So if there's no, if there's, if everybody's, if everybody is all set with the others, we just transfer that over.
All on there and not scroll, cause I was trying to read.
I wish I could, I can't get it all on there because I can get most of it.
Yeah, but but not scrolling, cause I was like trying to read and I couldn't find the the line.
Okay, so. There is nothing anymore for overtime?
We have not ident- that overtime line was a night, was was something we're looking for for the future, we have not gone back. On any of the departments to put it in, so we haven't even created, that's that's something for the future to be able to track it.
Time that is now being paid.
Is in the salary line, yes, in the salary line.
Thank you, that's all I wanted to know, so what are we doing with the big hundred and ten to three hundred and thirty-five thousand sort of parts?
That's one ten, that's showing the one ten.
So is that what we're doing?
That's, well, that's what's proposed right now.
Okay. Yeah, but if we're, I'm, I think that's probably the bigger question, so I'm gonna look at all the other lines and let's deal with the little things first and get that out of the way.
But I was gonna say, I thought that we'd really already done. Is that okay to everything else?
Pretty much.
Okay, did we, uh, uh.
And that's why, it's just, it's just whether or not anybody has anything else to bring up, if not, we just carry the lines over at this point. Understand that we're trying to fit, we're trying to wrap up the department stuff tonight, but.
I'm just refreshing.
We still have, our public hearing is gonna be somewhere around January seventeenth. Uh, which means that we have to have everything ironed out before that public hearing, okay? We need as much of this done now as possible, because we still have the school stuff to do in our next meeting, so.
Well, on the twenty-seventh, we have to have the budget ready for you people, we have to submit this budget to the, that's the way I I read the, uh.
No, no, we have until, we actually, because we didn't even, we won't even have the warrant articles voted on. We have until the pub- we present the public hearing and we're the ones to present the bu- the budget, so you don't have to present it back to us.
So I have to put what our recommendations on.
That's what this is now, that's what, we've already done that and had a joint meeting, all we have to do is talk to the BOS about. And I already know that, they were just waiting on the budget committee for these open items.
Okay, so what I see on the calendar, it says that's the last day we have to submit.
No, no, that's submitting it for the public part of it, we don't have to have it submit, we don't have to have it submitted by the twenty-seventh, we didn't last year.
We didn't even have the school stuff ironed out until January.
Yeah.
That doesn't happen till January.
Right, as a matter, and as a matter of fact, let me, let me bring, let me bring this up for 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 the committee and everything else to understand.
I'm trying to get the, um.
Oops. I'm gonna bring up the SB two.
The, um.
Oh, the planning board.
Planning board to move their meeting from the seventeenth, so we can have our public hearing.
Here's the dates of everything that we need to do, okay, this can, this is the SB two calendar, so. January seventeenth is our deadline for the budget hearing, we have to have every, the last day to post notice is January tenth. But we have up until the seventeenth to have every, as long as we've got a meeting. So, I had talked with Laura, cause she asked me, and I says, I suggested we, cause we've got, we've got meeting scheduled and I'll show you that. I suggested adding a meeting on January fifth, because that would be just after the holidays, so we can make sure that if we've got anything open, we can, we can talk to it. But this is the real date right here, January seventeenth for the public hearing and. And as far as the calendar goes Bob, let me bring it up for a moment so you can see where we're at, so. Calendar-wise, the twenty-seventh is just a, is just a meeting for us that we were expecting to go through, finalize any of the little stuff here for the school especially. Okay, that's what the twenty-seventh is.
Okay, I don't know why, but I saw something different in on mine.
No, so that's just the regular meeting and then the January timeframe, see, the problem we have right now is. The planning board has a regular meeting scheduled for the seventeenth, she's caught, and and if she hasn't hear back, I'm gonna contact it. I'll contact the chair myself as well, would like to see if we can get them to move that meeting out, so we can hold it on the seventeenth because. The day before is the holiday, we did, that's what we, we tried to do last year, so my suggestion of having a meeting on the fifth is. We have one scheduled for the tenth, okay, I think we should, we should have an extra meeting, and we don't need to vote on it tonight. We'll know on the twenty-seventh if we need that extra meeting, uh, when we're done with the school, if we get through the school stuff, then the only thing we're gonna have to look at. And why I suggest the fifth is warrant articles, because warrant articles, last year, we didn't even get them done until the eleventh of January, as far as our vote went. For the budget committee, because you don't know what they all are yet.
So we do have a meeting on the tenth?
We have a meeting scheduled already for January tenth, and a regular meeting on the twenty-fourth, what we hadn't scheduled yet was when the public hearing's gonna be. Because we don't know based on, and you know, we, we hadn't determined that part of it yet, but here's the thing, the earliest I see that we could hold it would be the thirteenth. And that's a Friday, in which case, we would have to have our notification go up by the sixth, cause it's gotta go up seven days before. That was where the fifth came into play, if we think we're gonna have to hold it on the thirteenth, we better have a meeting beforehand. So, the reality is, if we hold it on the seventeenth, we're all set here on the, you know.
Well, let me ask a question, I wouldn't, are you going to expect audience people?
For the public hearing?
Yeah.
How, it, the usual, which will be.
Three.
Three, four people, five people, and, and the, in the committees, you know, the board and the committee.
Alright, cause what I was gonna say is, Adam now has a decent computer, a new computer, to fix the issue that we had when we presented at the. School board. And he usually watches very carefully, but he was on stage, and did not see that it was not.
Yeah, it didn't broadcast, right.
Yeah, so, I can check and see if that committee does not want to change, move, whatever.
Oh, we may have, where we have it, this is just what the date is, so, you're right, we don't necessarily have to move the planning board if we have the meeting at the school.
Yeah, so just let me know so I can find out.
So that's true.
Yeah.
If we, we could hold it at the school, this is.
Okay.
And the, the video equipment will work.
Yeah, no, that's. Okay, no, that's a good part, that's, that's true.
That's a good option, yeah.
So anyways, again, so we all set, you understand that we, we wanna try to have it all done, obviously, the earliest, the better.
Yeah, and I do have to add that meeting on the fifth in.
Well, again, I would, I'd wait until the twenty-seventh before we decide, because we, if we're gonna do it on the seventeenth, I think we're okay.
Yeah.
Well, the twenty-seventh, we're definitely looking at.
December here.
The school stuff, the school stuff, the twenty-seventh, if we can get through the school stuff on the twenty-seventh, and this is just from my experience here.
We're good.
We don't need to add an extra meeting, because I think we can take care of the warrant article piece and everything else in our votes on the warrant articles for the, for the tenth.
Okay.
I know bugs.
Alright, um, okay.
So back to where we were, has everybody had a, does anybody have an issue with moving forward with the rest of the fire department's line items?
Look at the, the whole budget.
I will bring up the whole, yeah, okay, I can bring up the whole budget, so you know where it's at at this point, well, what the proposal was.
Right.
So, fire department budget, right now, the proposal. Um, from the, was five forty-six from, this was the proposal, this, that didn't include the eighteen, which I haven't changed yet. I changed it over here under the budget committee, so, five forty-six, that would end up being five forty-four. Uh, and let's see, which is, which is about three, which is three point eight percent. From the default, above the default.
Okay.
We don't have the default on there?
No, it's, it's, it's here, I just gotta go to the left a little bit, right there, the default's five twenty-six, so this is still. So this is twenty thou- just over, yeah, it's almost three point seven eight percent over, and it'd be like three point seven five if we take the other two over.
Which, understanding that electricity, it takes up a huge portion of that, because. Unfortunately, we can't add electricity into the default, which I think it's stupid, but it's not up to us, unfortunately. Um.
So what are we doing, we, we are keeping the part-time salary line, are we discussing keeping?
Do we want to add a little more than the one ten?
Yeah, that's.
That's what you're at, that's what you're at.
Can we do that at the deliberative, or can we, is there another place that we can, according to Chris?
We can't do anything line by line at the deliberative.
It would just be an adding to the overall budget.
You're adding it to the overall budget, but I'm sure the art.
You can talk to the article specifically for that, yes.
Can talk to the article specifically, in other words, it would be shameful if you did add.
Without expanding.
Thousand, and then not put it where.
Right, where it's needed.
You were gonna put it.
Right.
Um, the budget rule is, you can't go more than ten percent higher.
Increase.
Either, yeah.
My only concern is, uh, and, and Mike and I haven't talked about this, is, you know, what is, where is your? The two percent max that we.
We're gonna, hit, and that was, that's my concern too, so just to show you where we're at right now, and I, we were gonna, I was gonna bring this up tonight.
Allow you to adds, ask to add, ask from the floor to add so much money to the budget.
That we're increasing the cap, which by the way, we're gonna be, we're dangerously close anyways, because it's not this, it's not this budget. But I am gonna, let me go add in what I know we have to add in right now, cause I hadn't done it yet, the six hundred and eighteen thousand, we know needs to be added in here.
For the insurance, yeah.
Okay, and I hadn't done that yet, so I'm gonna put that in, so everybody understands what that is.
And that's the default.
Does to the budget, cause it's default as well, but I want you to understand what, how much that changed, we were at two point two one percent. We're now at four point four six, with just that, that's the budget increase over and above to, to last year.
And can you legally bring that forward?
Huh?
Can you legally?
Yes, cause that's not tax cap, that's budget, revenue, the revenues, it depend, your tax cap is a combination of the school. The town, and the revenue aspect of things, but the default, you can't change what the default's gonna be.
And health insurance is part of that default.
Right.
It's a contract.
So legally, yes, I just, but I, what I, what I want people to understand is, the more. The more we're under that number, the closer we are to the tax cap, and that's not to take anything away, but if you're gonna ask to increase something now. That's gonna, that's gonna offset that.
So we're at.
We're at four point four six percent, and we have not at, on the default, and there's one other number, did you get a chance to look at that retirement number?
No.
Okay, so the only other one that, and, and just so everyone knows, the only other one that I know is questionable, is the retirement money, because it hasn't gone up. But salaries have, so, I hadn't seen what the numbers were gonna be, but right now, as I asked, town administrator to look at, it looks like it's projected to run a hundred and twenty thousand this year. So.
And I got some, alright, here you say, numbers that are up, that just, this came up this afternoon, so under. Just under contract services for the housekeeping, it's no longer Melanson, under the TA's contract, it's Vashon Culke.
Okay, let me go bring that up.
I'm gonna have to change it right now.
Uh, well, I, I, no, I don't, but I'll change that after.
We have, we did acquire the new building at fifty-five Industrial Way, uh, the contracts that I had not included earlier, because, well, we didn't own it. Was fire suppression monitoring is thirty-three dollars a month.
Okay.
And it'll be the same probably for the alarm, cause we're trying to get the same company that does the alarm. Monitoring for fire, to do the security alarm.
So, under contract, I'm gonna go there now, so that we've got it.
It would definitely be under contract, right.
So, Melanson's gonna be Vashon Culke, right?
Yep.
That's the order, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, but the, the contracts told us.
I just.
Right, no, I'm just saying, because that's what we have too, so.
I just wanted that, if, you know, you're putting information out there as correct as possible, so someone doesn't say.
Right, and so, we're talking about, and we still had the Amazon Prime account, that's four hundred dollars, cause they said that that's gonna come out of the other. Are you using an Amazon Prime, I, you weren't at the other meeting, are you using Amazon Prime at the station?
We have Amazon Business, but I think we pay for it, right? I don't, yeah.
No, you're paying for it, it's, you, you, you get Amazon Business?
Yeah.
I have an Amazon Business account for work.
No, 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 I understand that, I didn't realize, cause that's not the case across the board, but what we're trying to do is eliminate the one, put it all under the. So that if, you got up to ten users for four hundred bucks, so, that's not gonna change the budget over four hundred bucks, but I think.
Yeah, so where you, for instance, where we have American Security Fire Line, that's for this building, so you'd need to double that to cover two buildings.
Until this one goes away, alright.
Right, and the same thing I would think for, um. Northeast, uh, you, you have a dime.
Security, yeah.
Twenty-five, you'd have to go four fifty if you were at, at, adequately gonna cover both buildings.
Alright, so that, we made those changes.
That's all.
And then you'd have to change the Atlantic broadband too, because that building's gonna have to have internet services?
No, when we transfer, it'll move just to there, that will all go away from here.
Probably end up, you know, it's like the.
We have an overlap for a week.
When we move, for instance, the audio equipment that's in this room is gonna go in the second meeting room, so that you can have two meetings in the same night.
Okay, so every, so everything is.
That's the whole idea.
Everything is coming out of this building, okay.
Have a separate proposal with them to put cameras and, um, speakers, microphones. In what would be the new, uh, selectmen's meeting room.
Okay.
Um, all that, and equipment back there would go in a common server room.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, would end up with basically a tablet.
Still waiting for the contract from, uh, from that day to do that.
Okay, okay, alright.
Isn't, doesn't have to be within the budget, uh, because there's two, there's a building, there's a technology. Uh, like a buildings upgrade account, I think it has twenty-six thousand in it, um, there's, uh, an IT account that has money in it.
Oh, good, okay.
Also a buildings maintenance, I don't wanna dip into those heavily, cause they're really intended for all the buildings.
Yeah.
Plus, there's about a hundred and forty thousand left in the ARPA funds.
Yep.
Perfect, that you can use, okay, awesome, alright, good.
And under the Atlantic broadband, like I said, the most you're gonna have is about a week overlap, so it's not gonna change, it's not gonna change everything else.
Alright.
So, thanks, Chris, so I'll bring that back up to just where we were working on.
So let's bring it back to the fire department and.
Actually, I'll tell you what I'm gonna do for now, we'll go back to that one afterwards, I will just bring it up to fire instead of everything else, so. Cause we already updated the other ones.
Alright, so, I mean. Could we add three or four thousand?
You've got the ability to ask for what you want, and then call for a vote.
I, I mean, will it do any, will it help any, I mean, I don't know if we can add, you know, an extra ten grand to it, Nick, and.
If there's not room, like I said, I haven't, I have no idea what the bottom line is.
Yeah.
I, I, I think until we see what, what, I, I think until we see what's drafted for the warrant article, because, and, and here's my suggestion, and if we decide. As a committee, to make that change, we can make the change all the way up until the seventeenth, you know, we don't have to do that tonight, we can go forward with what the numbers are here. And if after we see the warrant articles and, and decide to make a change, you've got that option.
Yeah, I mean, cause I really don't want to, I don't wanna, I don't wanna stick them with not enough. You know, in that part-time salary.
Well, right now, that's enough to cover what he's got, for people, what it's, what it's not doing is covering for anything extra. But that's part of what the warrant article would end up doing, if the warrant article goes forward, so.
Taking the, the people out of the revolving account.
Well, we gotta fig- yeah, we gotta figure that, so.
I know, I know, I know, but, you know, and there's.
I think, let me, let me put it this way, coming forward, cause I can't answer for the selectmen, I'm only answering for myself, knowing that we've got a meeting on Monday.
Yeah.
Part of that meeting is going to be determining what's done with that, with that, what we were tracking, that'll help us as a committee figure out what we're gonna do.
Yeah.
Cause I don't know what the vote's gonna be, and I can't say one way or another right now, so.
I'd rather wait till you guys decide.
So, I would suggest we move forward with what we agreed to, agreed with, and we can make a change if we need it.
Rough numbers, if we only had to fill eight shifts instead of ten, with pretty good people, it'd be two hundred and nineteen thousand.
Yeah, that's another, that's doubled, that's doubling that number right there.
Hundred and ten roughly, that means we're only spending a hundred and ten roughly out of the revolving fund, out of the two hundred grand, so it makes it sustainable if we get a. Full-time person, so, if there's not room to add it, we'll make it work, but.
Okay.
As long as there's some warrant article offset.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, no, agreed, yeah.
Well, the other thing too, is moving forward with that part-time line, isn't changing, I mean, the per diem line isn't changing anything, if your warrant article's asking for the full-time. That's the number that would end up changing.
Correct.
So, we don't know where that's going yet, so.
Yeah, okay, alright, so, I'll make a motion that we move forward with the numbers as they are right now. For the, um, budget committee, um, proposal, and then we can wait and see.
Overall, or just the fire department at this point?
Well, we're only talking to the fire.
Department, for the fire department.
Okay, I'd like to, I perf- personally would rather wait until the board of selectmen gets back to us.
On the whole budget?
Well, on the fire, I mean, we're talking about the fire department, I think we pretty much.
What Laura's asking is moving forward with the numbers for now, and we can revisit this if we need to, that's not our final vote, that's just. So that we know what our budget's gonna be for the budget committee at this point in time, I'd have to agree with her on this, this is just moving the numbers out, well then. Here's what we don't know, see, we have four, four point nine million right now under the proposed, the budget committee only has three point two, cause we haven't finished. The departments, until we finish the departments, we don't even know what we've got yet, so.
Departments, how about we?
Well, it's, there's, there's other items that were tabled, and we also haven't done the outside appropriations yet, which is gonna be a discussion on Monday. Cause we have to finalize that, so.
Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, but, I, I agree with Laura, and, and again, that's, it doesn't have to be, we weren't doing motions on, on whether we move forward, this is. Can you agree with what's there for now, and then we can revisit it?
Yeah, and I put a note in my thing, just, just, I put a note in my thing for the, the January tenth, if we hadn't addressed it already, whether we can add some of that. Uh, because I, I, you know, I, I, it, to put it in your notes too, do it.
Point of order, the default budget is, in fact, the selectmen's budget, Humphrey here representing us.
Right.
The voters vote on your proposed budget.
Right, right.
Yep.
So, there is no having to go back to the.
We don't have to go back to the select board.
To verify your proposed budget, that's.
We, we sent, we send it directly to the public, we don't have to, we don't, we don't, the board of selectmen doesn't have to approve what we've already approved.
Well, you, you marry it with the, you marry it with the, um, we put together the full one.
Right, yeah.
On the, for the twenty-sixth, that's what we send to the state, and that's what we notice the people, these are the. Well, it's not the offices, cause they, that hasn't closed yet, but it's the, um, these are the zoning art- articles, this is the budget article. And in that budget article is your number, and the default number, which is the selectmen's number, that's how you notice the people.
Okay, but I guess my question was, from what I'm understanding that Humphrey is saying. Will these selectmen say, okay, we can add twenty thousand dollars to that?
No, they can't do that, we have to do that.
Why can't they come back and add it?
Because this is, this is.
Hold on, wait, the selectmen can do that, if that's called for on a vote, right now, I know that when we sat down already, that. I put the, I put together the proposal here, they were in agreement with this at this point in time, okay, the budget committee now has, as Chris said, has what. Cause it's the budget committee's budget, has whatever right, you know, that you get, that you guys want, you know, that, as a committee, all of us. What we wanna put in there for a number, we can go up, we can go down, you can keep it the same, you know, it's up to the budget committee here, it doesn't have to go back to be approved by the board. When we had our joint meeting, they were in agreement with everything and agreed to let us table it and take care of it, that's what was done here.
So what were you talking about, then you've got a meeting Monday and, and, and we revisit it?
No, I says, on Monday, we're gonna go through, and.
Through the appropriations.
You gotta go through and the warrant article aspect of things, cause we've gotta have that done.
Right.
And, we've gotta look at the outside appropriations, which have not been done yet, because that's what we're gonna present, but the budget committee, just like we talked last year. Can turn around and vote on all of them right now, you don't have to wait for the board, it's just that normally the board's the one that says, yeah, man, to those.
Yeah, but now I'm hearing, no, we really can't change it, it's like.
No, we can change it.
Committee can change all the numbers if they want, okay, the budget committee is what, uh, the, the, this budget committee selectively. You're representing the school board, I'm representing the bo- the select board, the rest of the committee and everything else, with our input as well. Has the right to make this budget what. The rest of the committee and everything else, with our input as well, has the right to make this budget what we decide as a committee.
And so.
The board of selectmen can't tell us that we can't do that, it's, I mean, but they need the numbers for other things.
Right. We've just been trying to work with the board, and that, and the board is in agreement with leaving this in our hands at this last part, cause that's what we just did in that last meeting.
And, and what we can do is once we get the final numbers that the selectmen need to go through, we can take a look
Let's see if this.
and, and see if there is some room to add more money into Nick's budget.
Nick's, Nick's.
No, thank you, because that's what I wanted to hear, we've not approved, I mean.
We're approving it for what it is right now until.
There are some things that have been tabled.
That's what we're working on right now.
That's what we're working on right now.
Beyond the fire department.
Yes, we're gonna, it's what we're gonna wrap up tonight.
Okay, because. Never mind, you talked about being a numbers person, I am definitely a.
I, I. Okay, I think the other thing is, is in, in talking with what Nick brought up, is the select board still has to look and make a determination on what, we've been carrying the numbers and spending the money, and we're over expended, which we talked about in the expenditure line, under the part-time line here, okay? That's been covering the ambulance and everything else to see what it truly costs. It's up to the selectmen how much we spend, okay? So, that's gonna be a vote that's gonna take place on Monday, and that's why he was saying, hey, depending, we could say, we're not spending anything, we're spending some of it, or we're spending all of it out of what's remaining in the budget. That's the information, I think, as a committee, is to understand what, what the board's looking to spend, okay? Because right now, the budget for this year is only a hundred and six thousand, and we're on track to spend two, two forty, two fifty in that range, it's how much of that do we wanna spend, so I think that's, that's the piece that I think may, may have confused it.
Yeah.
Because that's a board decision.
We can go back and we can visit, once we have all the other numbers in place.
And see if we wanna make any other adjustments.
And see if we can make some adjustments to add some money back in.
Right now, Peg, if you look up top here, under the default, based on this proposal, okay? That is in this line, not the Budget Committee's proposal, but this was just the numbers that I said I had put forward, and the, and the, and the board did say, okay?
Yeah.
Is forty thousand eight hundred and eighty-two under the default total, okay? So, that's, understanding that, that's eight cents on the thousand, so. It's up to you again.
Okay, so I'm gonna do this one more time, I'm gonna make a motion to go ahead with the fire department's budget, as proposed by the Budget Committee.
Proposed.
And then, you know, later on, we can revisit, once all the numbers are in place.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Can I abstain?
No, you can say yes or no.
You don't have to agree, it's up to you, Peg.
Peg, under Robert's Rules of Order, if it helps, if one person votes no, then the item can be brought back to the floor.
I'm done. Um. Yes, as long as we can revisit.
And I'm gonna say aye.
Okay.
Now, and I wanna clarify something, we are not voting on the final budget until.
Agreed.
Later, that's the reason we can still revisit it, this is just to go through and put forth, so we understand where the numbers are.
Yeah.
So, and I will be, again, I'm not gonna waste all the time entering all the numbers in right now, well, actually, I think I can anyways, let me.
So, so Laura, I do have a little question, why couldn't she not abstain?
It, it, because.
There has to be a real valid reason for it, like.
Yeah, it has, yeah.
Just, just as knowledge, I just like to know, like.
Yeah, there, there has to be a valid reason, you know, it, uh, you know, whether it's conflict of interest, or something of that nature.
Conflict of interest.
No, but she's right, that really what it comes down to.
No, I just, I just like to know, I like to know.
It's, it's a yes or no vote.
I want a part, I want a part-time, whatever, she'll be on the roster, okay?
I wanna see, I wanna see you dragging some hoes, woman.
You guys are all welcome to come down anytime, Tyler, Jason, Gladby, you can do the gear and drag some.
Alright. Why can I stop?
Oh, I wanna, hey, I want you to find some gear that fits her.
We'll find money at the budget for that.
Just have her on the no, hey, have her on the nozzle.
I'm not that sure, okay?
I'm not kidding, you can come down, we will do that.
And you're gonna face, you're, you're gonna, you're gonna take a video of this, you better videotape that.
Yeah, you better.
Call me, I will come down and videotape that.
Alright, I'm gonna bring this back to where we're remaining, I gotta get out of the fire department.
Yeah, what do we got left?
That's what I'm about to try to figure out here.
You know, there's nothing like.
I should've eaten supper before I left.
Oh, no.
Alright, I'm gonna bring up the blanks that we still had, and we already had answers to a few, so, and I'm gonna provide the answers that I had.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Why is it still coming up on the fire department, I said all?
You didn't hit okay?
You didn't hit okay?
Thank you, that's why, I didn't realize I hadn't hit it, no, you're right.
It's two of us.
And Peg, Peg doesn't know itself.
Exactly.
Yep.
Thank you.
I do know it's self.
I appreciate it.
I know, I love it so, I just don't like all these macros that this guy does.
Alright, so, what we still have left, and again, this is what I was talking about, the outside appropriations.
Which we can't do anything right now.
No, actually, you can still, no, we can carry the numbers over, it's just that I know that the board's gonna look at it Monday.
Okay.
But, the, what we did last year as a committee, what we did last year was we went with the proposed numbers.
Thank you guys. Yeah, yeah, and I, and, and again, I think that that's the same.
And, I mean, I think that's the safest way to go, you go with the proposed numbers if they change.
Yeah, yeah, wasn't there a new one, was there a new request?
No, actually, it's, it's the We Care Food Printer, the name's changed.
Oh, okay, perfect, awesome.
So the name is.
Bye, okay, thank you.
Candy.
So.
I'll see if we're here, Miss Finick.
If I can to bring us back, and just to help, so if you guys want to move forward, I, I just sugge- I suggest, and it's a suggestion, cause again, it doesn't have to be an official vote.
Yeah.
That we just carry those numbers forward, so we know where we're at.
I'll make a motion to do that.
I'll second it.
Let's do it, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright, so we'll carry those over.
Okay.
Mike?
Mike's all set, he's in, alright, so those numbers are in.
He can't see.
Here's, here's what's, here's what's left, and I wanna, I wanna explain them, uh, if I eat candy, I'm not gonna go home.
Wait, what, that'd be some what?
Nah, I'm only kidding, I'm only kidding, nah, cause I don't eat candy normally, unless I'm at home, and I'll have one piece, so I don't wanna do it there. Alright, um, questions that were brought up by the, that were brought up by the Chair of the BOS, was the beach, and then I know Kim, you would, you would follow it up and, and ask too. So, the electric, um. This is at the, this is at the recreation, about beach location only, the telephone is not beach location only, that's the cellphone aspect of it, okay? That was the reason for those numbers, and it covers both the rec- director, as well as the assistant director, cause that's how they're in contact, is through the, is through the cellphones, okay? Um, the electric, there are three buildings down there at the, at the beach, all three have meters, even if we don't have any electricity running, that's over nine hundred bucks for the year, because you get paid, you get charged, and I know that, having my, a, a pole across the street from my house, you get, you get a charge of minimum fee of twenty-five dollars a month, whether you're using electricity or not, as long as that thing's there.
Yep.
Long as there's a meter.
That's, that's right, it's for the meter, yeah.
Yeah, you're paying for a meter, so, to give you an idea, the electric is somewhere around eleven hundred dollars for the whole year, and most of that is during the summer months, yes, they're down there, and that's something I know, we gotta, when we're in new building, we gotta visit some of that, but for right now, that's, that's why those numbers were there, and they haven't changed. So, they are the same as, as a matter of fact, we did lower the electric last year, I mean, this, for twenty twenty-two.
I remember that, yeah.
So, the other piece in here was the, was the operating supply line item, the six thirty. Uh, the supplies, she, she, we had already gone through, that number has not changed, that was still part of the default. The op- the second supply line, she agreed she doesn't need it, so we're gonna end up archiving it, so we're only gonna be tracking the stuff under the one.
Perfect, okay.
So, with that, I would make the motion to just carry those forward.
Yeah, yeah, I'll make a motion to carry those forward.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, the next one is for Peg to answer, if she wouldn't, if she remembered, the library, you have info? This was, this was the, what's being, you know, what might be duplicated, this is the contracted service piece, so I'm gonna bring it up. And that's all it was under here, is, is there anything in here we're paying for in both places?
Um, we have, because Betsy is no longer. Actually, if you can send me those names, because we get stuff, I mean, some of them from Amazon, yes, but our primary one is a state something.
That arrows it right down.
And what?
That arrows it right down, it's a state something.
Well, no, it's like, clear as mud. Adam hates it, he said it's ridiculous, he is more than happy to find out whatever anybody else in town uses, but I had no clue.
But what's it used for, Peg?
Basically, what it comes down to is.
Well, yeah, but I mean, this is like downloading from their website, and it's, it's a state education website.
Is it like digital books?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, it's, those are the schoolbook aspect of things for the kids and everything else?
Right, and it's very, right, very limited, so, if, if you can even send this little piece to me.
That would be different. I'll send this to you.
Yeah, then we can talk about that.
And, and we don't need it until, we don't need it until.
Because you've got. Right.
The twenty-seventh, so I'll send that to you.
Yeah.
Okay, let me go back then, and we can bring up the last couple items.
Get out of your macro, your copy.
Yeah, no, I, I wanna, let me see if I make, I think we're all set, debt services, we're all set on that.
But I had no clue what they were.
The only other one was.
The library person to call.
Up here, we are going to ca- I mean, we're not touching the insurances, that's, those are all gonna carry over, I'll bring those numbers up once we finalize those. The, the other one was the, was the treasurer, which, we don't have the mileage yet, and I am looking to get that information, so that we will have it. I mean, right now, I know Bob, you had suggested fourteen hundred bucks, I, and the only thing that's really kinda waiting on this is the, uh, is the mileage, I wanna find out what the trips are too, cause I think we need to understand that for, for going forward, so we'll get that information for the next meeting.
Treasurer.
Yep.
There is what, an assistant, uh, deputy of whatever it was?
Oh yeah, that's not even being tracked anymore.
Well, I know, because I was for like two years, and as far as I know, they're not even, there isn't even one, and there still is four hundred dollars in the budget.
Yep, I'm gonna go back to that right now and open that up.
Which, is there one, I mean, I.
Not for the owner.
No.
Okay, cause I used to, I, for a whole year, year and a half, I did the buzz.
We eliminated that last year. I'm sorry, we did not eliminate it, we talked about eliminating that last year, I should say.
No, no. Right, because remember I kept getting paid.
But, and that's a good, and that's a good thing, you kept getting paid?
Over, I, I got paid.
No?
No, they, they were putting it on the wrong line item.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were, that's, no, that's what it was, they were charging to that one, yeah, in all honesty, we could, we could, we could zip that down, we don't need it.
Right.
Dollar that out.
Just put it down to a dollar.
Yep, just leave it.
Because the bag comes and.
I, it's, it's not so much a fee, but if you did need to have, you, you can't, you don't wanna eliminate the position.
Yeah.
So, we could knock, we could knock that down to a dollar.
Yeah, cause maybe once or twice a week, I would end up making a deposit and put it for mileage, I was supposed to get a stipend, but they never gave me one.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to, um, drop the, uh.
Deputy.
Deputy treasurer down to a dollar.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I'm, and, I'm gonna put it down under both too.
Bob, you're good, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Alright, so that one's done, and like I said, we need the, all we need now is the, I'll get the mileage piece, and that is there, um. So, the only thing left is, I gotta figure out where our zeros are still. The insurances.
Yeah.
Which we will have, which we can't, I mean, we know that, that, the very least, they're gonna match, and as a matter of fact, I'm gonna carry the numbers over for now, so we see where we're at, okay?
I think we put that in there.
We know they're going up.
And we'll just make whatever adjustments we have to.
Didn't you tell us that the health insurance went up?
We, oh yeah, it went from five eleven to six eighteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we already know that.
Okay.
So, why are we at three hundred thousand dollars under, three hundred nine, I gotta see where we're at, what did I miss? I know that ain't mileage.
If it was, we don't.
If it was, yeah, let's see what we got for blanks still, that I don't have for blanks on the other one. Zero dollars and blanks, and so. Cemetery, we already know that that's, we carried that over, so there's the eighteen hundred here. That's, is zero.
Rex.
Oh, I didn't carry that over, that's part of it, which we did say, whoops, not fourteen thousand, one four oh three.
I'm placed on fourteen thousand.
No. And the operating, that's the, so we got forty-three hundred there.
Contract services didn't carry over.
Oh, bonding aspect, that's what it was, I gotta carry those over, right here.
You write the library contracted services.
No, I know, but I'm more interested in this one, that one I'm not gonna touch until you give us some info, so.
But that's not gonna change your line, it would just change ours if.
Yeah, it's true, we all set with that, if we do that?
Uh-huh.
Okay, I wanna make sure everyone's alright, so I'll carry that over, that's a valid point, alright. So, we are still under, and that's based on some adjustments we made, so that's where we're at right now, at fifty-nine, cause we did some, we did some cutting.
Fifty-nine, almost fifty thousand.
And I'll go back, because I know the BOS is gonna wanna match it up anyways.
Okay.
Okay, but again, right now, it doesn't have to, cause last year, when we finished up the budget, we had cut some additional from the, you know, from where we're at. So, the good news is, the BOS is at four point four five percent, and currently, the Budget Committee has knocked almost another point, another point four, so we're down to four point oh six percent.
Okay.
Over, last year, that's the variance to twenty twenty-two, we are fifty-nine thou- we are minus one point two percent under the default, so.
Alright, not bad, guys.
I will send this out to everyone.
Thank you.
And, um, I'm gonna make sure, oh, and again, there's the, I'm sorry, there's the other one, we're gonna revisit it, I haven't touched the, I haven't touched the treasurer one, so.
Yeah, the mileage. Okay, yeah.
That's eighteen hundred, so, so we've done pretty good. I will actually do a summary too, so it may not be till Thursday, I'll do a summary of what the differences were, okay, so that we know. Was there any, Chris, was there anything else, you and I have been talking, and I, I think that pretty much covered it, other than figuring out the retirement money.
Yeah, the only other thing that, um, Selectmen Burnham asked for the next meeting is to talk about the Sexton job.
Yeah, and that's a Warren article anyways, that's not, it's not in here, so.
Just a question, does the, are the assessing, did you change anything on the contract services?
For the assessing piece?
You mentioned something about that on the, on the meeting.
That, no, that's, that is for future assessment, that is not part of the assessing contract, that's the reevaluation.
Well, we don't say it that way, that it's not part, you signed a three-year contract with a re- property reevaluation
Right.
in twenty twenty-four, the idea was to encumber thirty-three thousand this year, so that in twenty twenty-four, you didn't have to raise a hundred and nine.
Yeah, it's to try to encumber money for the next few years from the budget.
Take a little bit at a time, cause you, it's a media contract.
So, it, well, it starts in twenty twenty-four, it'll be over in nine months. It isn't, it doesn't take three more years.
So, we're gonna do it this year, and we're gonna do it next year, and then following year would have.
What I wanted to do is encumber money this year, in twenty-two, encumber the other third in twenty twenty-three, this time a year from now. And then in twenty twenty-four, when the, it would actually have to be in the budget for the remaining third.
That's not gonna change any, that's gonna probably change the numbers on the assessing, would it not?
It will change the numbers under contract.
Okay, but.
If we get, yeah, if we get it, we encumber it, it'll change on the contract, and it'll go default and.
Okay, but.
It'll come up under an encumbered line now.
If we saw before, when we encumbered, that never hit that, that assessing line, you were showing assessing, depending on.
This will show up under an encumbered line, under the expenditures, which is, which is a separate line item, yes, and I, and I, you and I had gone through that.
It's gonna, it's gonna affect the assessing, how much we've spent, it's gonna show very little.
What we're saying though is, if it's an encumbered line item, it. What we're saying though is, if it's an encumbered line item, it needs to be charged when we go and move forward, that won't be spent this year, that's gonna be moved into an account for the fall, you know, for two years out. That's not gonna be an expenditure for this next year, he's looking to move money into an account.
I would, right, we have a reavout, revaluation.
Capital reserve fund, this is to fund the capital reserve fund.
Okay. Okay, now I know where it's gonna be.
Yeah, yeah, not, not part of the budget, yeah.
So, it's not really an encumber, I mean.
No, we can encumber funds on a contract to help.
Right.
Put into the.
No, no, I know, but it was, it goes into like a revolving.
Yeah, it's the, it's the fun, it's the fund, the capital reserve fund, yeah, yes. Alright.
We good?
I think we're good.
Okay, real quick, guys, before we leave, can we, um, just quickly vote on, um, the minutes, um, because we have quite a few, um.
I'll make a motion to vote, all of them, with all the corrections.
Yeah, I should just bring them up by date, because I know we've seen the changes, I'm gonna try to, yeah, you can bring it up, you've got.
Actually, I, I was gonna say, you could pull it up by the air, uh, um, the website.
Oh, no, you've got them on the website, that's right, I'll do that.
Yeah, because I put them all up on the website anyway, so, pull them up by the website.
Don't give me this no signal, just get back to it, please.
We're all getting a little spicy here.
No, it'll be there in a minute, the computer just gets a little touchy too. We've been making so many changes that the, the CPU is getting overloaded, alright, so let's bring this up under the minutes of the budget committee this time, come on.
Okay. Okay, now, you have to go to the budget. That's one thing I have figured out.
First set of minutes, yeah, is the draft from October twenty-fifth, and I know we made the changes, I will make a motion to go forward with this with changes.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So, you get that one, the joint meeting, you and, and I know we already brought that one forward too, because that even went forward with the B O S, so I will make a motion to go forward with this with changes.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then I'm, I have to abstain from the next one.
Right, and so.
I have a reason to abstain, I wasn't there.
That's right.
And I couldn't go in, and I couldn't go in, I was at the very end, and I wa, and that was it, so this is up to you guys.
And so, um, I will make a motion to.
I already looked at these, didn't I?
Yes, you did, yep, yep.
Okay, I made my changes, okay.
Yep, so I'll make a motion to, um, approve the minutes from the joint meeting with the school board, um, with changes.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Green this one, I'm like.